It's hard to lie in a more fair. You need to get used to coming. You need to get in the habit. You know, stop, stop, tell them, don't be like that. It's funny when people talk to me about stuff, they go, you know, that's a really good idea. You're so supportive, to be supportive, but you're gonna want to pop away with that. Uh, yeah, breaking the law. I don't, I don't expect. People see you. Yeah, you gotta, you gotta help. I got about five old people I got to answer in my world. Yeah, I usually get them wrong. No, I'll tell you, just tell them, don't do me.
It's a lot more effective that they're here.
Thank you. Oh, you can't go. Thank you.
Alrighty, let's go ahead and start through the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, do a roll call, please.
Councilmember Hardle.
Here.
Councilmember Morganelli.
Here.
Vice Mayor Womack. Mayor Wainco.
Here. Alrighty. Um, Ed, would you like to come up and do our prayer for us?
Thank you. Let's pray. Gracious God, we give you thanks and praise for the gift of this day, this time, this place, and this beautiful gathering. For out your Holy Spirit of blessing upon each and every individual here, guide, guard, direct, and protect each and every individual. And let all that we say and do bring honoring glory to your name. For this we pray, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you very much, sir. Alrighty, let's keep it moving. Um, our first thing is, um, presentation administration matters and discussions. We'll go ahead and do the, we're gonna select our new council person, hopefully, and if not, we don't, but there you go. Let's see how we wanna do this. We got, what, five people, right? If I remember right. Six people, okay. Does any of the six people wanna get up and talk to the council first? I wouldn't want to either. Um, we're in, we're in the process of trying to pick a council person to fill, um, Jim Lay's position until November, and then the person will have to run. So I guess I'll go ahead and, um, call people up. Let's see, who do you wanna go first? How about, um, how about Grant? You can hear him, Grant. Come on up. Sorry, I remembered your name first. But there you go. Well, I, I don't know how the council is, if you have questions you'd like to ask the people that are, um, applying to be the appointee, go right ahead.
I know we asked a lot of questions last time, so, anything new?
Nothing new. No, I, I laid out what I was looking at with appointments, so I don't have any questions at this time.
No, I, I got one. I guess I came prepared.
Okay.
Where would you see the town in five years, whatever you think's important? You know, what would you see in this town? Take a minute, because you're the first person, so it's not really fair.
So, I would like to see all the empty spaces that we have. Have the allotted, um, houses, you know, built out, or at least in the right direction of what's gonna be going in there. That way, once it's done, unless the town annexes more, more land into the, uh, the town, it's all taken care of. It can only, you know, we just focus on what's in the town at that point. Um, you know, the downtown district is something that I would like to see improved some, um, you know, whatever it takes to, to, you know, bring more business into the town, 'cause it's definitely something that's lacking. And with all those developments that are gonna be built out in the next five years or so, I think we could see that finally turned around. So, those are the main things I was looking for.
Excuse me, a, a question. I'm not a hundred percent sure how to ask it, so I'm not a hundred percent sure how you'll answer it. But basically, I, it, your approach to a problem. What is your approach to a problem? And I just pick up any, any problem, nothing, nothing specific, but if you are presented with a challenge, maybe that's a better word than, than a problem, how do you approach that?
Research. Just research everything I can about it, see what other people are doing, see what works, what doesn't work, um, and then bring that, you know, ideas that I come up with from there.
And in your research, what what avenues do you take? I, I granted everybody, like me, I do a lot of online research, um, back in the day, with a lot of library research.
You know, online, there's another town or municipality that does something that we're looking at, see how it's affected them in the long, you know, long term, see where they started with it, and see where it's at now. I mean, there's a lot of resources online that we can use to, you know, look at, so.
Thank you.
Got one for you. Grant, tonight, we're hitting a very interesting topic of our, um, comp plan. One of the new elements that's brought up in our comp plan, I don't know if everybody knows about it, you'll find out about it s- very shortly. A tourist, an idea of tourism, developing our town as a tourist spot with Lake Apopka, the potential for Lake Apopka, the north Lake Apopka shore, connecting trails and so forth. How do you feel the idea of Montverde's gonna be a tourist spot? There's advantages, there's disadvantages, there's, my thoughts are very, I have distinct thoughts about that. I'm gonna ask you that, 'cause if you're, that's something that's gonna be brought up, how do we, and it's been mentioned in a way of how do we offset revenue losses? Would tourism be a thing that could drive the, drive the cart, or is it tourism, we wanna say, run, baby, run away from that, we wanna, it'll destroy our town? It's fork in the road, I mean, it's, there's no proper answer. You got, you just got hit with it, sorry, but.
I think because of our location, I don't think tourism will ever be too much of a big thing where we're at. We're kinda tucked away. Um, you know, anything that we do to bring here, I would like to see it serve the residents instead of bringing people into, into the town, more or less. If we were to do, you know, a tourism element, you know, agritourism is really big right now, um, you know, I think there could be potential for that, so.
Another one?
Sure.
As a councilman, what would be your top three priorities?
Limiting the growth, doing what we can to improve the infrastructure in town, and like I said, the commercial district.
What was the first one?
Limiting growth.
Alright, um, I like it. You want some? Okay.
I'll throw one more out there. Um, one of the, the difficult things that I have found since, since I've been on the, the council is that I have to draw the distinction between what I personally want as a resident and what I think is best for the overall town. And that's, that's kind of the, a difficult thing for, for some people to, to do. You, excuse me, you've, you've been before the council, you've kinda been, you, you know the process.
Yeah.
Uh, on, on that side of the fence. When you're on this council, it's a, it's a little bit different. You're, you're, you can do that?
I think I can handle that, yeah.
On your application, you say you've been here thirty-three years, so.
Lived here my whole life.
Okay, I'm guessing that. And, um, I'm kinda interested in what you think you've seen in those thirty-three years, good and bad. Especially if somebody grew up here.
Yeah, I mean, the small-town element that it used to be is kinda fading, and, you know, that's a little bit, you know, sad to see. I think, you know, with the development, I think we have done a good job compared to everyone else around us to limit that, so that's one way to look at it. Um, you know, like the Osgood property, that was in the, the county, their first application, their first drawings could have been approved the way it was, with close to four hundred houses, commercial, uh, aspect to that. Um, you know, I'm glad that everyone's taking the steps that they have to really just draw that back. And, you know, stop that erosion of that small-town feel that, you know, I mentioned that I grew up here. I mean, we used to go and ride four-wheelers on the street, and no one would ever say anything about it, so, um, stuff like that, you can't get away with anymore, so, but.
So that would be bad. What has happened good in the town?
What's happened good?
Besides this council.
Uh, it's good to see the parks and everything going in, the Butterfly Garden, that's exciting, um, you know, all the improvements that have been made to Kirk Park, um, the sidewalks going in. It's, it's really finally coming together to a finished project for a town, you know, it was kinda half-built, it seemed like, back in the day, so.
Alrighty, go ahead. Got one more. Uh, this is my personal comment, and take it with a grain of salt. When you're on council, and this goes for everybody out there, you will find that there's many times the lesser of two evils, but they're two, still two evils. And it rips you, you're kinda saying, where's option C? Option C may never exist, or if it exists, you may be the only one who pushes option C to only be shot down, hypothetically. But just be aware, it's like, man, I thought this was gonna be really cool and neat. No. And you better be able to work your butt off. This is three hundred pages, six hundred pages, more or less, that was given to us Thursday, and it's Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, five days. And you're gonna be hit with six hundred pages, make a decision going forward on our town. Surprise.
I normally look at the full agenda packet whenever I can, so it won't be too different for me. I'm here at every meeting almost any, anyways, so I'd like to try to be, you know, part of the change.
I mentioned this to a person who was a candidate at the time, when he asked me about running as a candidate, and I said, told him the same thing, and I think you can attest that have I been about ninety-nine point nine percent right on that, I think.
It's a lot of fun if you love to read.
Yeah.
I don't mind reading, so, there's that. Like I said, doing research, it's just the same thing.
I'm good.
Well, thank you very much.
Alright, thank you.
Uh, let's see, who can I call up next? Um, by the way, each candidate filled an application out, so we're getting a lot of the information from the applications that you guys don't have. Let's see. Come on up. I like the man that raises his hand.
Hi, I'm Jimmy Rogers. I grew up in Montverde, um, been here fifty-two, so forty-seven years. So grew up in Vanilla Gardens, uh, joined the military after high school. Came back, been a resident of Montverde in city limits for past twenty years. So, raised two sons in this town. Um, I remember, uh, when the little pink building was actually our, uh, post office, so it's been a while. Ready for any questions?
Alright, um, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, same, same type of thing. There, there, there's a problem before you. What, what is your approach?
Um, I'll just use the same thing, granted. Actually, I do a lot of research, um, and I would look, I would look at other towns' muni-codes, see what they're doing, comparable size, region, things like that. I mean, what fits for the size of the population that we have. There's a lot of towns that are changing a lot of codes right now for a lot of different things, and so there's a lot of other people dealing with same issues.
Montverde is very unique. There's it, it is definitely not black, one size fits all, that, that is, is.
No, it's not. It's very much, uh, it's changed very much since I was growing up, right? I mean, I used to go to church in this building when I was a kid, believe it or not. So, I mean, it's, a lot of things have grown up and changed here. And it's for the best. I mean, I work in construction, landscape construction. I work with Tavistock and other big companies, Polde, I mean, all the big utilities and big things, um, developers. So I understand, in the towns, I've, we've done, my business works with Groveland, um, City of Claremont. So I understand how things work and how much it takes to get done. I work in a company that has collaborative leadership, so I understand working with multiple people and respecting everybody's opinion. Yours not always is gonna be the most popular, as somebody mentioned a minute ago, and that's it. But everybody needs to voice their opinion and speak for everybody in the community, and talk to people in the community.
Well, the same, same thing that, uh, Mr. Hardle put out there, that oftentimes you're, there, there is no good choice.
That's right.
And you can't, like, I can't, you shouldn't let your own personal feelings about your own personal property, or what you personally believe, you know, that your benefit over town benefit just doesn't, doesn't work.
No, ma'am, I understand that completely.
That's it.
Which one do I wanna ask you? About what makes you the best candidate for this position?
Oh, I don't know if I can say I'm the best candidate. I just stepped up here because I saw there was a need. Like I said, I grew up in this community. I would like to see proper infrastructure. I don't think that any of the, you know, the residents that have been here should have to be the burden on any new development. Growth needs to happen, it's gonna happen, as much as I've seen, I mean, everything I used to ride horses in now is a community. So it's gonna continue, there's nothing we can do to stop it, but we can't control the fact that how it's done, done properly. Good infrastructure, proper landscaping, I mean, I think that the town probably could use a good overhaul in their codes for that, to beautify the town. Mayor, you had asked a question about tourism, or somebody had brought up tourism a second ago, Alan. Um, you know, I agree that, you know, this, we're never gonna be a tourist destination, we don't have parking, right? But we do have a thing like the bike, the coast-to-coast trail, it does come through, or could come through Montverde, it passes by. We do get used for cyclists. The businesses here I do know suffer when the school's out, so things like that in the summertime could help those businesses stay open during the summertime. So I think it's important to look after those business owners. I mean, we're, not all of us can go out to eat every night of the week to support them, but we try, right? So, but we'd like to see them there. And as we grow, will we have the opportunity for more businesses? So finding what businesses work best in our little community would be real nice to see.
Well, you've been here, you know, as an adult, your whole adult life.
Yes, sir.
What would you, where do you see the town in five years?
See the town in five years?
Where would you like to see?
Where would I like to see it?
Yeah.
Like I said, I'd like to just make sure that as we grow, we do it properly. We figure out, I mean, I, I don't know every business of what the town council's been doing, I will say that, I've not been at all the meetings, but I would like to get caught up on what we're doing. Find out, like, our roads, I know I've seen, and I, like I said, I grew up here, there's a lot, plenty of stuff that needs to be fixed with our roads. Figure out how to give taxes things properly, make sure we're physically, you know, smart with our money, and try to fix, like, Lake, you know, Lake Florence, anything that we can do like that. I remember as a kid, that lake was clear. You know, but, so, yeah, and let me, Lake, Lake Apopka, it is getting better, certainly a lot better than when I was young, right? So it's good to see, it's exciting to see, and making sure that, you know, we provide that good boat ramp. The town's done a great job on providing for the seniors, and making sure, I noticed, you know, the Butterfly Garden was well thought out. Last town council people were talking about, you know, making sure there's opportunity for things to do, I think that's good. Montverde Day has always been a very important, you know, day for me, I always enjoyed it. It's changed a lot since I was a kid. I would like to see it kinda go back to the old time when it was neighbors selling, you know, their junk, because it actually gave everybody a reason to converse and become more neighborly, right? So, you know, the vendors are nice, but when everybody's got something to talk about over a tool, or a bacon dish, it was grandma's, it does help out. It does help commit, you know, make a sense of community a little bit more than just looking at, uh, somebody's jewelry, which I'm not taking away from that, but there is a little bit more when it's something small-town like.
Alrighty, thank you very much.
Alright, thank you.
Go ahead. Jimmy, I got a question for you. I just, sorry about this, Grant didn't think about it with you. We're at two point eight three mils. Do you see that as sustainable? If not, how do you address that in five years? Do you see that we're gonna run our town with what needs to be done on what we have? Nobody wants to raise taxes, nobody wants to, to do anything. What, besides raising taxes, what would be an alternative solution for capital revenue?
That's a good question, right? A little rough since I'm out of the finance, but I, I would think, the one thing is, I think, what I've seen and what I know is, like, there's been a lot of good grants that the town's been able to acquire. I think that's smart, it helps out. We are gonna get some more taxes, right? We are picking up more people. I think water prices, you know, our irrigation or our water bill is a little steep, but it needs to be. I think that, you know, we could institute through landscaping, that's something I do as, for a living, is work with native plants to help reduce watering costs and help save that. Taxes, I mean, it's, it's, it's a thing, so, I mean, everybody has to, we all have to pay our part on that, so if it has to go up, it has to go up. I mean, you're not gonna be able to do much if you don't have money to work with. I'm not saying I'm for jacking it up real high, right? Nobody wants to pay that, but there is a cost of doing business, and there's just no way around it, right?
Alrighty, any more? Any more questions? Good job, thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty, who can I call next? How about, how about Brian?
Hello. Brian Rubio, one six five four eight Magnolia Terrace. Um, I don't have anything in specific to say. Um, I was here, obviously, at the two meetings ago, um, and I did, you know, kinda explain who I was, so I guess I'm open for the questions.
Well, I've got a pretty good idea about your, your approach to a problem. You, you are a research guy, and I admire that, and you, um, hands down, you are a research guy. And in your ability to be able to separate your personal feelings from what ultimately would be best for the town?
So, and this is something that I apply in my personal life, I try to be as objective as possible, and I try to look at it from every angle. So traditionally, when I come across a problem, regardless whether it's a professional one or not, I, I look at the root cause of that. Figure out what's causing it, and then kinda from there, figure out where I need to look. And I also pull perspective from the other side, so when I'm looking at something, I'm not just, it's my bias, you know, view, no, I'm looking at it from every angle possible. Even, you know, players that are not necessarily directly implicated, but the implications outside of that, so.
And I, I think Mr., um, excuse me, Mr. Hardle's question about budget, five, ten years out. Now, if you recall the question, it, it, if given we have two point eight now, is that sustainable in terms of future revenue? What do you see?
So I don't think it's much of necessarily finding revenue, it's more of managing the cost, right? So that's taking a look at where we stand now, where can we save money, right? And then the revenue thing, you can't really, I guess, overcome the fact that there's one way, which is obviously taxes. So, you know, to minimize that and not to be dependent on that revenue, it just has to go back to the cost management. So I think that's, that's first, before you look at the revenue side of things. And then, obviously, for the budget, you know, I, I mean, if it was up to me, I'll sit here for hours asking questions on the budget itself, on different line items of what they are, um, what specifically, you know, goes into that, so, but again, normally, look at the budget, cost management, then you can look at the revenue side.
Thank you.
Question for you. The newest streets in town are in Magnolia Terrace, they're twenty years old. The rest of the town is much further behind that for street repairs. Uh, this is an ongoing discussion, how do we pay for streets? You mentioned manage our resources. This is a resource that is the same that in the federal government, the can gets kicked down the road. Well, it's bouncing against the wall. What do you do?
Well, squeaky wheel gets the grease, right? That's the way I look at it. Um, from the aspect of pulling, uh, resources from, whether it's the, uh, county or at the state level, you know, obviously, we're not experts in grants. We have, obviously, some assets on, on, on the town side where we could go and figure out what those grants could be. As for the issue of addressing it as a whole, well, obviously, it needs to get addressed. You know, pretty much, nothing is meant to last forever, so.
Well, one of my principles is that don't look for the federal government, or the state government, or the county government to give you a handout. Your solution to this problem. 'Cause we can't always count on our federal government, we can't count on our local and everybody else, so sometimes we have to be self-sufficient. And that, that really puts you in a hard spot, shall we say.
So, I guess to further elaborate on something, it goes back to the cost management. You know, once you start cutting costs certain places where it's being wasted, you can redirect those funds for other things, for improvements, streets, sidewalks, whatever it is. And obviously, again, you know, that's not relying on revenue side from the state or someone else. So I think, you know, mainly, we have to be self-sufficient from that aspect, so.
So in cause, in terms of cost management, would stuff like, um, well, the dinners before the council meetings? Or the, and granted, the Butterfly Garden comes with, uh, grant money, um, but like the Christmas and the Easter egg and Montverde Day? You know, if push comes to shove, is that where you would be willing to, to cut in budgets for those types of items?
Not necessarily in the bigger ones. The smaller ones, I think, are not significant enough. They're just, you know, like, for example, the, the food. But as for the bigger ones, well, you know, at the end of the day, we do have the budget, right? And, you know, at least from what I've seen in the last two years in regards to the budget, is everything usually gets bumped up by a certain percentage. So, from that aspect, you know, and again, you have to take a look at the entire thing. I'm not, I'm not saying necessarily those events are the more money-consuming things. There's other things there that, you know, we might wanna look at. we might want to look at and address first. Obviously, you gotta keep that balance as to, you know, you can't just pull the money from the events, and you can't just pull the money from the rest of the stuff. You know, you kind of have to find that medium balance. And it goes back to strategic planning, right? As to what's a priority for the town itself, you know, what events are the biggest events? We could leave those alone and not touch them, and then obviously, see where else we could save money.
Thank you.
Let me give you a question. Let me give you a new one, since it wouldn't be fair.
Sure.
Okay, have, have you been involved in the community up to this point?
Uh, any community? Not necessarily?
No, this community.
This community itself? Well, up until recently, just obviously being a voice outside of, you know, the council, outside of the town. As for volunteering, well, I haven't volunteered at any events. Outside of the town, there's other stuff that I do volunteer.
Yeah, no, just really in the community. I didn't, I didn't know if you were involved in anything. I, that's, I don't really know of any of y'all.
Yeah, not, not with the town directly, but outside, I've done tons of things, all the way from working with the vet center, coordinating some of the events for them, this is a few years back. And then just other organizations, obviously, all the committees that I serve on, that's all volunteer.
Here, I'll give you the, where do you see the town in five years?
So, and I look at it from this perspective. I have two little ones, right? I moved here because of what Mont Verde is, the DNA in this place, right? And I want that for my kids. When they get older, I want them to have that as well. I don't see myself leaving anytime soon. Honestly, I just don't see myself leaving, period. But, back to the five-year growth, and, you know, we could go further out, but it's to kind of position the town to be a model for smart, sustainable growth. And on top of that, to preserve our DNA. When I say our DNA, I'm referring to the town itself. So, you know, you can't really paint a picture, you know, with fine details. Obviously, I'm limited on some of the resources and knowledge from the town side, but mainly is that, is to continue to preserve the town, and then obviously, you address the growth in a sustainable, smart way.
On, I'm building, a lot of people get mad at the town government because they go out and drive around, and they're mad because of traffic in Claremont, traffic on a turnpike. And they get home, and they, you know, they come to a council meeting, and they're like, "Oh, I'm sick of the growth." I try to explain to them, "Just think of Mount Verde," when you talk to me about the growth, "'cause I don't have control and nothing else." But, um, how can I put it? Well, like, like what Alan was saying before, where in Mount Verde only, once, once Osgood's done, that's gonna be built, the half-acre lots. Belliclina, who's owned that 58 acres since 2004, is finally gonna do something with it, because the economy's good, so they're gonna build on it. That's gonna be done pretty soon here, too. They're, they're gonna build less than two homes per acre. So we have those two big giant areas taken care of. The only thing that I know of, and I'm pretty, I know the town, is there's 37 and a half acres going towards the Mobile Home Park on the right, that borders Belliclina, and they're really the only customer for that. So once those three pieces are done, two of them are done right now, where is the other place in the town that can be built that we should be worried about right now?
Obviously, the, the biggest parcels, I mean, that's usually, you know, obviously, if you have a bunch of parcels in one small area, it's gonna be hard to consolidate them, so it really will go up to look at the bigger parcels. But, I guess, I want to elaborate a little bit more on, on the growth. I understand, and I never said that, you know, this growth has to be stopped, it's just, we have to really scrutinize, you know, whatever is at hand, right? And go a step further even after that. But, back to answering your question, you know, I don't, I can't think of any specific area other than the big pieces of land, anything, you know, over two, three acres.
Well, and let me end my question with, once we, this council puts in place and the voters vote on it in November to change the charter, to any density change in the codes, any, it would take four out of five council people to change it within the next 20, forever with the other councils. So this being a place, which by the way, our planning department brought it to us, and made us realize it, and I thank them for it, because I'm hell-bent on getting that in place this year, because I'm gonna die someday, and I want it to be done. And the 20, the four out of five people voting to increase any kind of density, we're pretty much locking up. So when I look at the town, the only places that are really big are on Lake Street and Ridgewood, you got 10 acres on each of that. And then you got some adjoining properties that, like the McQuade Zone, that could be bought and jointed into that, which would cause a problem for people that don't want a lot of growth here. That's why we're trying to do the four out of five. Do you support the four out of five council people?
Yeah, so red tape is usually, obviously, like, looked at, it's a bad thing when you see red tape, but in this scenario, obviously, red tape, I think, is necessary. Just to go a little bit further, you know, past that, you know, to add more red tape, if possible, at some point, you know, limit the term on the council members. That way, we do get different perspectives, and we continue to get different perspectives over the years. So, back to the red tape, I'm for it. Obviously, you know, that takes an extra person to be on board, and it, you know, goes back to the consensus, consensus thinking, obviously, as a council, as a group.
You know, I'll add to what I was just saying. The other thing that we have in place that protects us is the limit, the height limit is 35 foot. So nothing can be built in Mount Verde more than 35 foot. So the, if somebody was to buy three acres and try to put townhomes on it, or whatever, if it's zoned a certain way, which some of the properties are, they could, but the 35, the 35-foot limits that. So we'd, we'd, different things like that, we've done in the last 20 years, have, are paying us back now. And would you support keeping that at 35 foot?
I would say so, if you want to continue to control, obviously, that growth, and make it sustainable, so absolutely, obviously.
And the other thing that we have going on is live local, which is a state-run thing that they're making, giving away the rights to a lot of people. If it's industrial property, which Mineola has a lot of it, correct me if I'm wrong, Sean and Lisa, but if it's, live local allows any developer to go on to the industrial property and build pretty much what they want without coming to the city. And they can build anything tall enough, but it has to be less than any, the highest point building in the city. So, for example, Mineola has plenty of big, tall buildings, so if somebody wanted to come in, and correct me if I'm saying something wrong, but that's how I understand it, a developer can come in, find the industrial property, and build their 50-foot condos or whatever. Is that right?
Yeah, in most cases.
Okay. Okay, right. What I'm getting at with all that is, we purposely don't have any industrial property in Mount Verde. So I would want to make sure that you're, wouldn't be in favor of having any industrial property. There's hidden reasons why you want not, not to have industrial property. That's a big one, the live local.
I follow.
Okay. Alright, that's all I got. I could go on for two hours if I'll stop. Okay.
Anyone else?
Quick question. You alluded to term limits. We can see good and bad of that. I've always thought Mont Verde has been a cohesive group of people who are, they'll put who in they desire and who they don't. And I always have thought that if you poke a pig enough, it's gonna squeal, and it's gonna squeal you out of office. I'm always of the opinion that the voters are the smarter people, and the voters will put you in, or the voters will take you out, you know, based on your performance or lack of performance. So, that's my thought on that.
I totally understand. And just to give you a little bit of perspective on my end from, you know, from the term limits. So, obviously, it's always the same people participating, you know, and voting. It's, it's, you're never gonna get 100% participation. So what frequently happens, and not necessarily just here in the town, just in general, people vote for, I guess, for, you know, from a popular standpoint, who's the popular person, or, you know, who is it that I know, and I've known for 20, 30 years and whatnot. So I think with the term limits, it'll kind of, you know, again, back to bringing fresh perspective, so that's just my take on it.
What would you see for term limits?
I don't know. That's something that, I mean, it's, obviously, would be a discussion, but I don't know what that would look like, something not too short and not too long, so finding that balance.
It's two years now, right? Yeah, two years now.
Well, it's not term limits. Term limits is you can't run more than...
From, yeah, rerunning, yeah.
But, I, in my mind, the election pretty much, you know, it, term limits are regardless if you don't get re-elected, you know?
Yeah. But then again, you know, that also forces people to want to have to, obviously, run and apply when, 'cause it comes a point in time where it's like, you're checked, right? Let's say there is a term limit, everyone already exhausted those term limits, well, it forces new council members in there, and you still have the elections, I'm not saying, you know?
I, I, I see that, that point, and I, I think this is a, and I could be wrong, 'cause I'm, have not been living in Mount Verde nearly as long as a lot of other people have. But I'd venture to say that this is probably the largest turnout to run for an open seat in the history of Mount Verde, so I would hope that that type of participation and enthusiasm would stay regardless of term, term limits. The more people that come out, the better the town. So, applauding everybody who's standing before us at this mic tonight.
I agree.
Oh, you got anything?
Nope.
Alright, well, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. How about Marta?
Marta Vodichka, and I was not born here. I know a lot of people said they were. I have a question for you.
Okay.
Where do you see your town in five years?
Wherever the residents want to go. Wherever the residents come and tell us to take it. That's my answer.
I, I, my hope is that it is similar to what we have today, you know? The Butterfly Garden, there were residents that, that came out for that and stayed for dinner. I think the picnics were, went over well. The, you, when you go to events in, in other cities, Claremont, Mineola, or whatever, there, that's what's missing, i- is the neighbor to neighbor, okay? And granted, I live on one end of town, and somebody may live on the other, but we're still only two miles apart. I, I mean, that's walking distance for the most part, right? And I, I, I would love to have Mont Verde keep that, that feel. Whether you agree with what I do on this council or not, you're still my neighbor. And if there's something I can do, knock on my door. You know? That's something that I haven't found anywhere else but here. Well, a little bit in the Panhandle, but not like this.
I agree.
Carol, you made a good point. I think I would use the word sterile. It's a, they put on a presentation, and it's, it is, "Hey, we got this, that, and the other, we got barbecue," and that's it. There's no interaction within the town, within the community, to say everybody, and it just, it's like sterilized. It's like there's nothing to it, so. And from a farming point of view, Jimmy can tell you too, and Grant could say so too, nothing grows in sterile soil, so.
You know, it, your words, and the thing pops into my mind, it's like, okay, that, that is, that's it. We, we don't put on events. We, the town, all of us, we are the event. Now, that, that's, that's a big difference between us and everybody else.
Okay, let's go back on track here. How about, where do you see the town in five years?
More sidewalks, so that we can connect different areas of town, and I talked about that before. Bringing more residents to the businesses that we have here locally, helping those businesses out by participating. When I moved here five and a half, five and a half years ago with my son and my husband, and I went to our first Christmas event here, it was fantastic, and it continues to be every year. I taped it, and I had it on Facebook, and all of my friends, you know, they fell in love with it, and I told them, "This is the best town that I've ever lived in." And I want this to be that way for the future generations, and for my child, who hopefully will stay here. So definitely, getting more of that community feel, keeping that community feel, getting people together is important.
What is the, what is your understanding of the responsibilities of a council person?
Well, we definitely need to do our research. We need to be able to speak about various issues. We need to talk to our neighbors. I feel that is very important, listening to other people. We might not know everything, but finding the people in the community and then elsewhere that might have the answers, and being open to listening to them and learning is the responsibility of the council.
Why do you think you could be the best candidate we should pick?
I don't know that I am the best candidate. I think we have a lot of qualified people that would do a great job. What I can say is that I will be dedicated, and I will do my best. I will bring my previous experience, and my knowledge, and the ability to talk to people, and especially to listen, to try and bring everyone together.
And your approach to a problem?
Well, research is one. Now, I can change my mind, and other people can change my mind, too, if I listen to somebody else's point, and if they make a good point. I think it's important to be able to change your mind and not be set in your ways. Definitely talking to others, and speaking to people in my community, trying to understand what their point of view is.
And I think the fact that you said that, yes, you, you're not planted in cement, that you can change your mind along the way, pretty much kind of answers my second question about your ability to separate yourself as a resident and a council member. But while I mentioned it, I received emails and had conversations with, with almost everybody I could. There's not anybody in this room that is, that has an application before us that somebody didn't either send me an email on, or say, "Hey, I like this person." So it helps when everybody speaks up.
Yes.
Marta, quick question, everybody else's, or several have been asked, is the tax situation that we asked Brian, how do you see sustainability without increasing taxes? What's your solution?
Well, there has to be some revenue coming in, right? The taxes, as they are right now, I think with a little bit of more growth, we will have more revenue. But that growth is limited, like you've mentioned before. Once we build everything out, it will be what it is, and if we don't manage the money properly, we'll have to increase taxes, but hopefully, that will not be an immediate need. Also, being frugal is probably a good thing, and I grew up in a family that was very frugal, so making sure that we use everything that we have and reuse, recycle, if you will, take care of what we have and maintain what we have as well as we possibly can, will later reduce the cost of having to rebuild.
What do you believe is the most important role of a council member?
After being to a number of meetings, staying cool is probably a good thing to be able to do. Keeping your head where it needs to be, level-headed, able to, like I said, listen and talk, and not get too emotional at times, is probably what one needs to be on the council.
Kind of be a good example.
A good example of that? A good example of that?
You would be a good example to the residents?
I would like to be. Am I perfect? No. Have I made mistakes before? Yes. Have I said some things that maybe I shouldn't have? Yes. Do I strive to be better every day? Definitely.
Okay. Have, have you been involved in our community in any, any way since you moved here?
So, with, with my neighbors, um, last storm, I met you in the streets and Paul, so you were doing rounds. I was out there checking on my neighbors, helping fix a fence. Um, we had a neighbor who broke her arm. She was elderly, so I dragged my son out of the house and we made sure that we cleared her yard. And then another neighbor that is elderly, same thing. So, just helping the people right around me.
Kind of like what Carol was talking about.
Yeah, taking care of the people there. And if I see that something is happening, or maybe you haven't had a chance to see a message, I'll text you and let you know, like I've done before.
Did you enjoy the, the yoga?
Oh, yes. Oh, my goodness, yes. That was wonderful.
Put a plug for that.
Thank you, yes. So, I, I met a new resident to Montverd at one of the meetings. She organized a yoga session, so I called a few friends and we went to, to join her, and it was wonderful. I recommend it for everyone. It was nice to meet new people in town, and, uh, she will be doing it probably weekly as long as the weather allows. So, I, I recommend that. And we will have a plant exchange next time, so, yeah. Trying to meet people out.
I'm going to drop a bomb here, so everybody, put your steel-toed shoes on. You may get your foot stepped on, and sorry about that. If you post on Facebook, do you think you should be held accountable for what you say on Facebook even though you have the Second Amendment right to, to say that? Oh, man, I'm sorry, First Amendment right to say that? And yet, say one thing on, uh, social media and then distance yourself from that? Should a person be held responsible for that? When it comes to council issues or town issues in period?
Can you?
Meaning you go on, meaning you go on Facebook and say, ex, something horrible, and then, oh, I never said that, but yet, here's a trail where you engaged in whatever community service or, I mean, group of people saying, boy, you know, I just, you know, they're, they're despicable. We ought to do this, they ought to do that. And then turn around and say, boy, you're the best person we ever had. How do you feel or how do you address something like that if you're on council? Or wish to be on council? Do you, should, should you be held, should that person be held accountable, accountable for their actions? Or their voice of opinion? We're all entitled to an opinion.
We are all entitled to an opinion, and, um, I think how people see certain things may differ. So, you and I may have a conversation, and what I think and what I feel about that conversation may be different from your standpoint. And then a bystander might see it a completely different way. So, as far as communication, whether it is Facebook or in-person, how do you hold someone accountable?
That, that's the question. I think Carol, Councilman Womack said that. What you feel and what you do are two different things. Sometimes you have to separate yourself. I find sometimes when you go down this road and you say, I want to go one hundred and eighty degrees from that, it's like, you know, a fox in a hen house, you know, with feathers in its mouth saying, I never ate a chicken, but you got feathers all over your mouth. What do you, how do you, you know, distance yourself from that kind of approach?
Like I said before, keep a cool head and try and understand that people make mistakes. I will give you an example. During the last election, my signs were being removed. Someone was caught on camera removing my signs. I made a post on Facebook asking that the sign be returned, and the sign was returned. There were certain people in town who wanted me to go after the person anyway. And I said, once the signs are returned, I'm going to be perfectly fine. So, I did not want to prosecute someone for doing something that, you know, it didn't really harm me, but I didn't want to go after someone who definitely returned my signs. And I said I was not going to do anything about it, even though people were pressuring me to do something about it.
Well, as, as humans, it's human nature to judge by what we hear and what we see and what we read. So, um, that kind of sets who you are, you know, your character, so... And character speaks to me pretty good, anyway.
Sometimes we also make jokes that others may not take as a joke. So, maybe it's important to distance oneself for a while from that and get to know that person more personally, if you will.
Carol?
Yeah, I'm good.
Uh, thank you very much, Marta.
Thank you.
Good job.
And that was a good illustration, that whole sign, ah, ah.
Alrighty, um, let me see, who can I pick next? How about Thomas?
Good evening. I'm Thomas Johnson. Been in Montverd for eight years. What makes, sets me apart from the rest of the candidates is, or to be one of the best candidates to be on the panel, is I've been in community work by being on the Planning and Zoning Committee, the Vision Committee. I've also been, um, HOA boards, um, Adopt a Roads, all those things within this community. Not to mention the things outside. I've also, um... I'm not on social media, Alan, so there's no need for me to wear social, uh, hard-toed shoes.
Guess what? I, I don't, I don't pay attention to it. Why let your blood, blood pressure go up or irritation to say?
I don't have a Facebook page. I don't indulge in that. I know what that, what can happen, so... Again, that's one of the things you don't have to worry about with me being on the board, along with, um, I am a hard worker, and that's what you can expect out of me. I'm open for questions.
Well, you answered a lot of them, right?
Okay.
Wait, no, I'm kidding. What, what would you say, well, I guess what you just said is why you think you'd be the best candidate, right?
Yes.
So, um, what would you, what would you say the most important role is for a councilperson?
Well, one of the main ingredients is to learn to listen with empathy and speak with sympathy. Be a team player and, um, be willing to go the extra mile when times get tough.
Now, does team player mean we would expect you to go along with everything that I want?
Well, of course not. You know? We all don't agree with everything, and it's okay, okay to disagree.
It is okay to disagree.
Yeah. So, we just need to do it in a respectful manner.
Amen. What do you see the town in five years?
Well, I know the town will be even greater than what it is now. Because I know you all, as the committee, is making sure that you get the right people in place to make sure that we stay sustainable. And, um, I also see the town being a lot closer niche because we're seeing, I'm seeing, a lot more participation with folks coming out. So, that in itself tells me that the town's going to be and do great things within the five years. Pardon?
We feed them.
Well, I think it's more than that.
Oh.
The town is getting involved.
Yeah, thank God. What would be your three top priorities as a coun, if you got on council?
Well, to make sure that, um, we keep the community engaged and informed.
So, that'd be one.
Also, um... Repeat the question again.
Your three top priorities, if you got on council? What would you want to do first? What would you try to lead this group to help you, you know, on your agenda?
Well, one of the other things is I'd like to, as I mentioned in my, um, resume there, that I'd like to start a scholarship fund with the finances that are provided for the, um, each one of the councilmen. I'm willing to donate that to start the fund, to provide some extra funding to help the needy when people fall on hard times. And I'm sure that, um, the panel, um, we can get a workshop together and come up with a, a good scholarship fund. The other one is, make sure that all of the members are making sure that they are open and honest so that the town will increase the trust and trust one hundred percent in what we're doing. So, heighten the awareness of everything that's going on behind the scenes and bring it to the forefront before any final decisions.
So, how long you been on Planning and Zoning now?
Enough to get gray hairs.
I'd say five, four, five years.
Yeah, it's been a while. I've gotten some gray hairs. So, I'm familiar with, uh, agreeing to disagree. Not going for the okie-doke or the old banana in the tailpipe trick. And also be open and honest. And, um, I just want to make sure that I bring the best because Montverd deserves the best. And, uh, I'm the guy for that.
Well, you know, none of the other candidates been on Planning and Zoning. What would you say your advantages from being on Planning and Zoning all those years?
Well, you, you have a better understanding of the process. I mean, practice makes perfect. So, you get a lot of practice. Five years of practice is a long time, and I think that's enough.
You think?
To next, to increase to the next level.
Would you, like, I was on Planning and Zoning five years, and when I began sitting here as a councilperson and we would hear the Planning and Zoning Board's opinion, I held it real up here because, guess what? They took their time and they thought about it. So, I would want to give them a lot more credit. I think you were on Planning and Zoning, weren't you? Yeah, and, um, and then you had a couple of meetings, right, on Planning and Zoning? So, it's just, you, you, you give them a lot more credit because they do it, you know?
Right.
And, um, I, I just want to.
We're in the trenches.
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah.
We're taking the, the body shots up front.
And the council gets to watch that, so they're ready for the meeting.
That's correct. And there's no room for error or favoritism.
Anybody got any more questions? Go ahead.
Hey, Thomas, I'm going to ask you about the tax situation. Resources are limited. We've already, as you know, we've got situations with water. Uh, we've been talking about water lines, replacing them, streets, sidewalks. How do you accomplish those on a limited tax basis that we have? When it seems, when it seems that taxes will have to go up to compensate for services? Agree, disagree, or how do you, uh, address that?
Well, first of all, there's, I can't do that by myself. It takes a village, and I think the council is the village. So, we would need to form workshops to do something to rectify the, the matter. You agree? Okay, thank you.
There's a problem, you have to find a solution, even if it's the lesser of two evils.
Right. But everybody's watching the council. Through the big eye.
Alrighty, very good. I appreciate it. Do you have anything else? Alan, Carol?
Good.
Mike? I don't, yeah. Did a great job, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
And last but not least, Judy. How about, I saved the best for last, how's that? I saved the best for last, how's that?
My name is Judy Lay. I live at one seven three two eight First Street in Mountverd. As you know, my husband is the one that just stepped down, so I'm going to try to take his place as best that I can. Thank you. Ask away.
Well, um, I can ask my questions. What's your top three priorities that you would like to get done on the council?
Top three priorities? I know you've asked that question from, from the others. That's a tough question for me because I know that with my husband being on the council, I've heard a lot of pros and cons regarding, um, uh, the Osgood property and the sewer system and all those other things. So, Mountverd has grown so much that I just, honestly, I don't know if I have an answer for that.
Hey, that's fair. And you guys got any questions? Go ahead.
Your approach to solving problems?
My approach to solving problems? Well?
It's a wide-open question. I realize that.
Yeah. Talking to people. I do social media. I, I think social media is a good thing and it's a bad thing, but, um, I'm a stalker. And so, I like to hear and read what other people think. So, um, social media is one way, Google is another way, talking to my neighbors is another way, and gathering all the information that I can and putting it together and trying to form my own opinion. Okay?
Stalker is a definition I haven't actually heard for that, but, okay. I can see where it is.
I don't always like, but I like to read.
I, I understand that. I'm right there with you. As we've discussed earlier, it, it's, it's not easy to separate yourself sometimes from what needs to be done on the council versus your own personal opinion and what you think, you know, should be the way that, that, that things go, so, um... Yeah. Can you separate your own personal feelings from some of the difficult decisions that may be made on this council?
I believe so. And I say that because my husband and I haven't always agreed on things. We've had discussions about it, and he had his opinion and I had my opinion. So, can I, can I look at it objectively? Yes.
Thank you.
What do you believe is the most important role for a councilperson?
To get along with everybody, to be objective, um, to do your research, um, and to listen. I know that, uh, I think it's important that the, the council has, that they all get along and they all... There's not conflict and it's not divided. I, I, I don't want a divided council. I, 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 it's important. I think we've had an awesome council up to this point, and I'd like to try to keep it that way. I, I have to say that, that one of the questions that's been asked about where do you expect this to be in five years? We've been living here for. We've been living here for about 17 years now, and we, my husband and I have been coming here for 30 years because his parents have owned the property since 19, in the 70s. When we first started coming here to visit on the weekends, my husband said, "When I retire, we're moving here." And I was like, "No, you're not," because the only grocery store was Kmart. And I was like, "You're not sticking me in the boonies." Then they built Publix, and I was like, "Okay, I'm good." My point is, over the last 30 years, this town has grown. Mount Verde Academy has grown. How much more can it grow within five years? Not as much as it has grown. I think we're getting, like they've said, we've only got a few more pieces of property that they can build on, and I think we put, I think we put where they can only build up so high in half acre lots and et cetera, so five years from now, we're not going to be as far as we came. Any questions?
That's true.
Judy, I'm going to go here on my background. I've been involved in agriculture mostly all of my life, and I'm proud of it, but no regrets. What I bring to the table to council is agriculture, DEP, St. John's Water Management, Pollution Control, expansion, water resources, water withdrawals. I've been doing that for 50 years. I've heard stuff from University of Florida before it came down the pike. I've brought things to council, and it's been like, "Well, yeah, it'll never happen." Next thing you know, "Hey, the state legislature just voted." Boom! Yeah, like, I'm sitting here going, "Yeah, I knew that 10 years ago it was coming," but being in agriculture, things start at the agriculture level. We're the test, the guinea pigs, and from there they go up, which has been great. I'm also 41 years as an environmental safety expert for a chemical company that I worked for proudly for 41 years, and I've seen all kinds of things from EPA regulations and what you can do and can't do, and how it affects every day our lives, chemicals that we use and so forth. I try and bring that to the table when we have conversations regarding anything that pertains to our town. My question to you would be, what would you bring to our town? What would you bring to the council that would be, "Hey, this is my expertise"? It could be a grandmother, or, I mean, anything. I'm just curious. We all have assets. What would you say my asset is? Fill in the blank.
Well, I definitely don't have your qualifications. I don't have Thomas's qualifications. I don't have Brian Rubio's qualifications. There are several of them up here, that they by far have far more under their belt than I do. For 25 years, though, I can tell you, my job is, I edited for court reporters nationwide, trials, arbitrations, depositions. I've heard attorneys argue, ask the same question five times expecting a different answer. I've heard people agree, people disagree, and people lie. And even though I can't see them, I can hear them. So I feel like with all that experience, listening to all that controversy, and coming up with what I might think is a right or wrong answer, I'm pulling in all that information, and I mean, we're talking thousands of pages of information. And honestly, at the end of it, I usually would tell my court reporter what I thought. I have been a soccer referee for 15 years. I've been involved with youth at the church. I've been involved in Girl Scouts. I've done a lot of volunteer work. Have I done volunteer work for the town? Not as much as some of the other candidates have, mainly because I've been by my husband's side, with him. So what can I bring to my, to the plate? Just me, and being honest, and being a part of this community, and being just like everybody else behind me. That's it. Anything else?
No. Let me see. Oh, you just answered my next question. Have you been involved in the town's community? What kind of actions have you been involved in? But you just answered it.
Yeah.
So let me think of a new one, wait a minute.
Okay.
No, I'm kidding. I guess you're good to go.
Thank you.
Good job, thank you.
Thank you.
Right, well, there it is. We've got to discuss as a council if, how we want to move forward. And Anita, the last time we voted on this, you had mentioned a certain way to vote. Is there a certain way to vote, or do we just nominate somebody and then they vote?
Typically, there would be a motion and a second for a particular person, as opposed to doing nominations and having a number of nominations on the floor.
Okay, so if somebody wants to nominate somebody, they make the motion?
Right. I would suggest a motion and then a second, and proceed in that fashion.
Okay, thank you very much.
That, that motion, if you're making the first motion, that does not count as a, as a vote, is that correct? And then whoever seconds-
Correct, but whoever makes, if you make a motion, then you have to vote in support of your motion.
Whether it's the first or second?
You don't, if you're making the second.
Okay.
So you can second someone's motion, and you're not obligated to vote in favor of the motion.
Okay.
But if you make the motion-
Then you should vote in favor of the motion.
Okay. All right, just accepted out on the table first.
Pick point of order. Anita, you said should. So if you make a first, the first nomination, that is confirming that you are voting for that person? Is that what you're saying?
That is Robert's Rules of Order.
Right.
So if you don't want to follow Robert's Rules of Order, you don't have to follow that. But typically, whoever makes a motion should be making the motion that they're willing to support. Yes, and vote in that fashion.
Okay, so we don't, we don't follow the rules of order?
You do not, no.
Okay. So can we make a-
I promise you, I will not make a motion tonight that I don't second. How's that? If that makes better for you guys?
Well, no, the, it caught me off guard.
I didn't want to say that.
I'd never been in a, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Okay, I think we got it.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. All righty, so here we are, we got the six candidates, all of them have their, you know, pluses and minuses, and we need to do something.
I will make a motion in support of Thomas.
Okay, so we have a motion to support Thomas, and I'm second that one, I was going to nominate him myself. So I have a first and a second. Anita, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Against, say nay.
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 Okay, we tied. All righty. That's what we're trying to do, is get a third person in there, a fifth person. Break ties. All righty. Anybody else want to make a motion? I'm making a motion that we support Grant.
I'll second that motion in favor of Grant.
All right, I got a first and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All against, say nay.
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 Okay. Who else? I'm making a motion that we support Judy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, Anita, second. I need a second.
I will second in favor of you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say nay.
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 Okay. Well, I made three motions, so anybody else want to make a motion? That's it, we tied in three votes. So Anita, do we pick another date? What would you suggest?
You can continue to solicit applications and go through this process. However, in August, you will be having a caucus to fill this seat at the general election in November. So you could go through the process in June and July, but obviously, in August would be the caucus.
Well, I think we try it one more time, first meeting in July, and that gives us June off to think about it more, and the candidates to reevaluate if they want to apply one more time or not. Because it did switch around from the last time we did it. There was different people that came, and some of the same people. So I'll make a motion that we do another meeting like this in July, a first meeting in July.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to go out on a limb here. Whether you agree or disagree, I think we've got six great candidates, and from my personal point of view, I would just soon let the electorates, our voters, choose the final who they're going to do in November, so that, that, you know, that settles every, settles all the dust. When the seat is filled, it's filled. That's just my opinion, and I throw it out there, and I don't know how the other, the other three of you feel on it, but that's how I feel. I think we've got good voters, good intentions, we've got good candidates. I would sleep easier at night saying, "We didn't choose them, the residents of the town chose them," and that's the voice of the people.
You know, I'd go along with that because I, I want to see debates. I want to see the people that are going to run for November sit up here, have the, have the people in the town come and debate subjects, or talk to the, talk to the residents, instead of just, you know, not having nothing, and then the people have to vote on the name that they like, or, "I'm voting for this, this because she's a lady," or, "I'm voting for him because he's, he's a man." So I kind of want to lean towards that, but I did make a motion to move it to July, so I got to finish that one first. So I made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Mayor, real quick, may I interject?
Yeah.
If you do do a meeting in July, can I ask that it be a special meeting? Our first meeting in July is probably already three or four hours long.
Is that all?
Because we have two developments coming forward.
Okay, that's fine, yeah, good idea. Okay, so sometime in July, we'll have the second meeting, the next one.
Are there any, anything between now and, let's just say, you know, November or caucus time that, that's relatively major, that we run the possibility of, same situation of, of tonight with a split vote on something that is time pressing, that has to get through? Is there anything coming in the future?
We, we have a pretty packed agendas all the way through the year. I know we'll have the hills of Mount Verde coming through. The county has some stuff we're working on. We got the JPA, obviously, we're going to have a discussion tonight and probably move that forward, but probably more development stuff would be the, the main thing coming through. We'll have some decisions on the water system coming up and stormwater, so, you know, a lot of large money topics on the budget will be coming up.
If it fell that way?
Well, if I could just interject two more items of importance. Your budget and setting your mileage rate are two important things relating to voting. I would also point out that the charter that is adopted by the people of the town says that the council shall appoint someone if there is a vacancy and if the election is beyond 60 days from that vacancy occurring. So the people appointed and the, you know, adopted a charter that said they want you to choose someone to fill that term. And we know the seat is going to be part of the election, so I would just point that out. It's still your prerogative, but the charter does indicate that the council should put someone in the spot.
Can you read it? Can you read that to us, please?
Yes.
Oh, I got it right here.
A vacancy in the council shall be filled in one of two, of the, one of the following ways. I'll read the one that's applicable, and I can go back and read the other if you choose. If there are more than 60 days remaining before the next regular town election is scheduled, the council shall, by majority vote of the remaining members, appoint a qualified person to fill the vacancy for the remainder of the unexpired term of office.
Right, by majority vote, right?
Correct.
All right, so the charter's asking us to take, to fill it because we have to make decisions, pretty big ones coming up, and whoever does get on it is going to have to spend a lot of time with Paul because you can't talk, the person can't talk to us, get him up to date on what the topics are, and, and, so it's going to be time consuming for the person that does get on, but we do need a full council to move, to do it correctly, and it's what the charter asks us to do. And the charter is what the residents voted on. So I'll go back to my motion. I motioned that we do, do it next time, sometime in July, because we do have a lot of people on vacation in June, so it's going to be a problem. And I don't want to do it when nobody's not here. So I need a second.
Can I throw something out that Mr. Morganelli brought up back when?
Sure.
Was the possibility of a retreat? Would this topic be a good thing to tackle at a retreat type of format?
What do you think, Anita?
I don't think so.
I need the lawyer.
It would have to be a special meeting. I mean, if you wanted a retreat, but it would still have to be a special meeting in order to be able to take action.
Okay.
Yeah, it has to be a public meeting.
Yeah, no, no, that, that, I mean, yeah.
If the council wanted to just have a meeting to discuss the virtues of each of the candidates, you know, we could arrange that if that's something they wanted to do. That'd be up to the council again to call for that, so.
Well, I do think the council's going to need to spend some time in conversation. I mean, however we want to do it. Gentlemen?
I made the motion.
All right, repeat your motion, please.
I'm making a motion that we table it until July sometime, and we have it, we address it in July. Whether we do a workshop, not a workshop, but a special meeting, or the second meeting of the month, that we can decide that and let everybody know. And we can even do, like Anita was saying, a meeting where it's the only topic and we all can talk about it.
I think that would probably be the best solution, and then it, it, it's a big point right now.
Okay, so that would be fine, I'm just saying we do it sometime in July.
You guys okay with that?
That's what council wants to do, I'm fine.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
Oh, I'll be here then.
You want June 2nd?
Yeah. Because here, what are we, middle of May?
Yeah, in June, June, people are on vacation. I don't want to sneak it.
I mean, I know that's the motion. I, I sort of tend to lean a little bit with Alan on this, in the sense that I, I understand what you're mentioning as well, but at the same time, if we don't agree, then we don't agree, and that's sort of, that's just where we're at. I mean, I get what you're asking, and you want to discuss more. I mean, I laid out, I'm going to be honest, I laid out meetings, research, and engagement. Those are the three things for me. I owe it to the residents for that. I, I, you know, that's-
Well, the charter is the residents. The charter's-
All right, but it's what I've been looking for for that appointment. And, and all the applicants, I agree, they're, they're qualified, they're, they're good, but each one, there's, I, I come to that same conclusion.
Okay, so-
Court question for Anita. Come, come July, we're a hung two-two. We're basically in defiance of the charter, but yet we're not in defiance of the charter because that's how the council voted. Would that be a correct assumption?
The charter says we, doesn't say we have to, it says we have that option, correct?
You shall.
You shall. You shall.
I'm going to go ahead, I'll go ahead and Joe, Mr. Mayor, I'll second your motion for July.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Against, say nay.
But if we do not-
Nay.
If we do not-
It's passed.
If, if we don't conquer it in July, then we leave it open.
We address it then. We address it then.
And I don't, I, I don't want to put you guys on the, the spot, but I, I'm curious why you, you did not nominate a candidate tonight? You, you don't have to answer that.
Well, I don't, I explain myself.
Okay, so-
If you want, I'll answer, I'll answer that, actually.
But you don't, you don't have to, like I said, it's a point of curiosity.
I probably shouldn't, but I will, and I have a feeling that applicant that met my criteria, it would have been a two-two tie on the- I probably shouldn't, but I will. And I have a feeling the applicant that met my criteria, it would've been a two-two tie on the other side. Just gonna be honest with you. And that's why I really just was quiet all night because I'm just, we missed an opportunity at the last time when all these applicants were up to talk and we did them a disservice by not doing this back then. This is my opinion on that.
I'm sorry, I didn't follow that.
We should've done what we did tonight at the last meeting by asking all these questions instead of just the appointment process. No, we just made a quick, we could've made a quick motion at the last meeting. I said, we made a quick motion at the last meeting.
But we did have opportunity to ask some questions.
We did, yes. But we didn't, it wasn't this.
We've gotten more thorough, I believe, as the process has gone along. Because the basic questions have been answered, so we go a little deeper. That's just my opinion, but yeah.
We're getting better at it. Next time, we're gonna be really good at it.
But if we don't get it done and, and then we'll just.
Close that bridge.
Alrighty, so we passed it. Then we're gonna have it again sometime in July.
Yes.
And we'll try to talk about it more.
We should.
Okay.
Cause otherwise it is.
Next topic.
Alrighty.
Counsel, just for clarity, are you wanting to open up to new applicants again or just existing applicants that are there?
Well, we'll see who applies.
So you want more, you wanna allow people to apply?
We'll call up the applicants that we wanna talk to. And maybe it's all of them again, maybe not. We'll see. Alrighty, let's move on because it's getting later and later. I'm gonna ask any citizen that wants to talk to the council about a subject that's not on the agenda to come up now.
Counsel, Sean, Paul. I speak on behalf of Jerry Brown, 15978 Wynden Bluff. I think there's like seven other Willer Ridge residents here. You think you asked for us at the last meeting? We did bring twice as many. Okay, so I wrote some things down. I apologize. I'm more of a computer nerd than, than a speaker, but I wrote some things down from my heart.
You said you guys are from where?
Uh, Willer Ridge.
Okay, okay.
I wrote some things down from my heart and after discussions with the Facebook group, so I believe what I'm saying is, is on behalf of the entire Willer Ridge, we're asking for help. We, um, we are the closest to the turnpike in newer development. The turnpike was moved closer to us. With the Doppler effect and the turnpike reason, lava backyards get ninety decibels of sound. We, you guys are more than, Sean, you're, I believe you're a member of the Turnpike Commission? So, but anyway, it's a serious issue, though. This is, this is the issue at ninety decibels is in comparison to, it's a risk of sustained hearing loss. It's equivalent to a subway train, welder or sander. So this is, this is to do with the culmination of factors. That I mentioned the turnpike is spent closer to us. It was raised. The engine braking of trucks, which happens in the afternoon about once, once a minute. And the builder initially told us to build a eight-foot wall between us and the turnpike. They end up only building a five-foot six-inch wall. So, but however, though, with the agreements they made, a sign, we kind of, even though we had marked in the materials that said that we were promised eight-foot wall, it's gonna be very difficult for us to go through the builder to get it done. So furthermore, the builder has not met the obligations of the PUD. The PUD basically said they would have to build a six-foot wall along a fall state road. I measured it myself. It was five foot six at, not at the post level, but at the panel level, which is where you should measure walls. Now, this would come back and hurt our residents because at any time the township can come back and say, "This is not, the community's not, you know, the, the community doesn't have a high enough wall there so that we, we have to pay." But if you were to note them now, when the builder saw a warranty period with the HOA, cause they control the HOA as well, then they, they would basically be forced to actually, you know, do something about it. And the goal of us would actually to sort of motivate them to sort of help us with, uh, build a bamboo wall to basically put the turnpike for fractions of across, a bamboo wall. If you go up and down 429 by Disney World, you'll see the bamboo and it's doing a great job of noise. I, I've been to one of those communities and we believe for fractions of the cost, this would alleviate the sound. So furthermore, we, we would also ask if, what the turnpike is also, how it's being built, it's overflowing water where the elevator, the road. The water drainage is actually coming through the, the small turnpike wall that they're, that the builder did build for us. So it's actually causing real damage. We have spoken to the turnpike, a few places there. We've spoken to the state representatives. Us as individuals, we have a lot less meaning than actually as a township. So like you said, we represent, you know, we have a Facebook group and these issues have kind of like brought us closer together. And you can see, you know, we're all friends and we're all like hanging out. So the turnpike wall for us is the biggest issue. The second thing, one to bring up, bring to attention is that there's a fifty-five percent lawn grass rule. And I believe how it's, I was, that's actually in the PUD, but that's also in the municipal code, section four one eighty-five G. Which basically, and I consulted the, a dozen other townships' municipal codes. And there is no exception. There was no grandfathered provision in that code that basically said existing properties aren't subject to this, or only new subdivisions are subject to this. Therefore, by the code, this should be enforced townshipwide. But however, from our research, it is being a hundred percent only enforced in new subdivisions. Not in new properties on existing, you know, non-subdivisions. It's also not being enforced on, excuse me, it's not being enforced in, in like, um, major landscaping work. Like someone builds a pool in a, in an existing town. So we believe that we're being treated unfairly by the town codes. And furthermore, there was section four one eight-nine, the appeal section, which may be giving the township the ability to write the, the code and enforce at the same time, which would be a violation of Florida, of everything democratic. We believe the township should conduct a legal review of this as they're potentially exposing themselves to a class action by limiting enforcement of the fifty-five percent rule to, to a specific class of its residents, us.
What was the second thing? What was the, was it grass or something? I didn't hear.
It's a fifty-five percent lawn grass. Even though it's in the PUD code, it's also in the township code for one eight-nine G.
It has to be fifty-five percent grass?
Maximum fifty, fifty-five percent lawn grass. We're, we're basically trying to, you know, our backyards, we, we, we would like to build like more pools in our backyard, more developments in our backyards. And we're being like hindered to basically develop our properties because the properties came in kind of rough. With basically like tons of turnpike noises, so the more we build in the backyard, more it will alleviate the sounds.
So you're saying that your, your property has to have at least fifty?
It's also in the township.
Have to, has to have at least fifty-five percent grass?
No.
I'm sorry.
Would you like to speak?
Please be quiet back there. Please, let us talk.
The point is, it isn't that it's in the PUD. It's the point that it's also, it's in the township code, municipal code, but it's only being enforced in the new subdivisions.
No, I understand that. I just don't understand what it is.
It's, it's basically the fifty-five, no more than fifty, I could, I could read it, read it out to you. But it basically states that no more than fifty-five percent of the property may have lawn grass.
Oh, so you can't cover grass over your whole yard?
And it's, it's, it gets into like, the, the basis of this was basically on the, the Florida green, the Florida water. But however, though, in its, in this alternative, it's a ton of mulch and all the mulch is irrigated with, with basically like little bushes. So at the end of the day, it's not actually saving water.
This is the first time I'm hearing it, so I gotta ask.
Well, we did talk about it in the Facebook group.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't understand exactly what the fifty-five was. That's my problem.
So Mayor, I could probably address that. So, yeah, in the town's code, it doesn't matter if it's a PUD or a subdivision. It's in the new subdivision regulations, and I'll let Sean correct me if I'm wrong on this. In the new subdivision regulations, a maximum block coverage of fifty-five percent of the open impervious space can be sought. Anything past that has to be landscaping beds. So that basically was a result of St. John's pushing their conservation efforts from, I guess, when Sean implemented this. And my understanding is a lot of communities are really actually getting stringent more than fifty-five. Sean, you say something going like the twenty-five percent or something?
Fifteen to twenty-five percent of the town.
Yeah, so it's, it's getting, it's getting stricter and that was actually, we had to turn in our conservation efforts for new subdivisions, for instance, in our consumptive use permit for our water. So that's really kind of a push from St. John's and that's why it was adopted in our code and it was adopted, I think, back in seventeen. But it applies to all new subdivisions, doesn't necessarily have any.
But he's saying that it's the whole town.
The simple read of the code, it applies to the whole town.
It's for new subdivisions only, not anything existing, new subdivisions in the.
Please, I read it simple.
Wait, so if I build a brand new house inside town, it's not in the subdivision, so it doesn't follow that rule? Is that right, Anita?
It wouldn't, it wouldn't, that's.
It's new, it's new, all new development.
What about a new house?
A new house, yeah.
So any new house?
Any, any new house.
Not just the development?
Yeah, they're, they're, it's not going through to find people that are doing, putting up fences and tell them all of a sudden they gotta do fifty-five percent landscaping.
And just as a follow-up, it doesn't limit them from putting a pool or another porch in or anything along that line. So it's fifty-five percent of impervious. So if you put a pool in, we're, we're not gonna then take away, we'll look at the fifty-five percent that's remaining is what the design standards are. So you can put a pool in, but you're just back to a maximum of fifty-five percent can be soughted in there. In addition, you know, they, they are free to replace their landscape beds with rock or different types of mulch. And there's nothing in the code that stops them from doing that, but they have an HOA they gotta work with if, you know, they may have different standards.
Okay, but I'm, I'm following two things here. One is that, are they the only one that have to do that, the new division?
It's in the Osgo development and it will be in the, uh, Monver Estates development as well. Cause again, it goes to all new developments and you just.
But this young man saying it has to be done in the whole town.
Section four one eighty-five G, it's the whole town.
So if we can, let's get that straight first. Does it have to be the whole town?
I can verify that.
Huh?
I can verify that.
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's for the whole town. It's also for new subdivisions, but it's all new development. So it's not, it's not gonna be, it's gonna be residential. If you're gonna build a new residential structure, then that's gonna apply to you. If you're putting up a fence or doing something like that, it's not gonna.
I, I've seen other municipal codes that basically very clearly, every other one very clearly says that these existing properties are grandfathered in. The, the code in, in Monver does not have those exceptions.
How would you answer that?
That's probably more of a ego question. I would say there is, I'll let Anita answer that once it gets to the research though.
It will take a reading of the entire landscape code. I mean, I, I understand what his point is. I see the language that he's pointing to, which does say fifty-five percent of your yard cannot be, more than fifty-five percent cannot be turf grass. We would need to look at it. It does, you know, have a purpose of the landscape code, but there are other provisions. So I would say now's probably not the best time to answer it, but could come back at the next meeting to explain it more to counsel and happy to meet with him offline.
Could you stop enforcing it while you review the code?
We can't do that. It's, it's in the code.
It's still, it's still part of the PUD.
Yes.
And, yeah, by that alone, I mean.
By that alone, it applies to them regardless. But if council wants to know the answer to your question, Mayor, which is if I go build a new house in the town, do I have to comply with it? My recollection from when these were adopted is yes, but I would need to review the code to point to the correct section.
But the existing homes that have been here fifty, forty years, ten years, they don't follow it?
They don't have to follow it. If it was building the new house, they would have to. If you, if you demolished a home and you were putting in a new one, then you have to come into compliance with the new codes.
I.
Could you just?
I read the code.
Anita, when you get a chance, can you just verify, since they're gonna come back anyway with that, can you just verify what he's mentioning as well? For existing homes, just to make sure. And that way we can explain it as well for that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna research that and get back to you on that one.
And we, we would ask for a meeting with you guys basically to help us, to basically go, to basically go to one of our backyards, see the sound. It's, it's insane. And it's like I said, it's a Doppler effect of the wind carrying the turnpike noises with the engine braking over, over, with elevation. It's bad for our children's ears. We're here because we're desperate.
I got, I'm, I'm stuck. If anybody has an idea, look, how can we help you? Give us some ideas, though.
You mentioned bamboo?
Yes. The, the newer communities, the newer communities around Disney by four twenty-nine, they're all going bamboo.
Yeah, it's pretty neat. I've seen it. You gotta come up and state your name and say all that. Come on up. Your name, your address, your checkbook balance.
Jimmy Rogers, seventeen through two-five Second Street. I just wanted to maybe tell you not to go with bamboo. If you're really curious about where it grows, it's near river bottoms, it takes a lot of water. So we're on the Sand Hill Ridge here in Florida, so you would continuously, your HOA would have to water and water and fertilize because it's grown in fertile soil. It's fastest growing plant, I understand, sir. But what I would recommend is native trees. They're not gonna grow as fast as you like, but you can water them and they will grow faster. And at some point, you will be able to take them off that water as they get established. So pine trees, live oaks and things like that that will stand the test of time and the hurricanes, where your bamboo will not. And every time that you have a storm, bamboo will blow debris in your yards and in your pools and everywhere else. Sure.
Well, hey Jimmy, explain who you, what you do for a living.
Okay, I'm sorry. So I'm an ISA certified arborist for over twenty years. I've worked for the theme park industry over twenty. I was, last three years I worked in the theme park industry, I was in charge of three theme parks' horticulture department. I now work for a large, biggest, one of the biggest tree farms in the southeast and now I work with native plants, bringing them into the industry to help with things like the St. John's water and Toho Water Authority and things like that to save the water because of Sand Hill Ridge or even in places in the, in the slow lands where Florida is running out of water. And so that's, it's water conservation is what we're trying to do and water quality, so that our state can keep our springs and things like that. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just wanna mention that he said he's impartial. He has a personal business interest.
He has knowledge.
And I also wanna say that there bamboo, there is a native bamboo species of Florida. So we always consider this bamboo as, as being completely non-Fliridian. Bamboo itself has been a long heritage inside of Florida, so.
You would want us to help you get the developer?
Well, we need, for, for one thing is, is bamboo itself is, it's technically a grass, but it has canopy, so it has tree-like qualities. So it's, it's to the point where if we're going to invest, you know, a lot of my, for one thing, we would like your help talking to the builder saying that, "Hey, you underbuilt this wall. Why don't you help out the, you know?"
I got you. Now, did you, we, I talked to you, I think, on email and then, um, Paul was gonna get with you guys and get the builder. Can you explain what happened with that?
Sure. I did, I did reach out and talk to the builder, Polte Homes, on the development. I offered to come to one of the HOA meetings basically to listen and, and, I kinda know what the concerns were, I explained that to them. And see if they would wanna come with me to a HOA meeting to talk through maybe some solutions with the residents. Polte Homes says they're not interested in that, doing that. They want to deal with the residents directly through their HOA and basically not have us in the middle, I guess, is probably a lack of me summarizing the terms of it. He recommended that, you know, as far as the tree planting and stuff, you know, that's something that they can work with their HOA to see. Eventually, that HOA is gonna switch over to residents' control, probably here in the very near future. And that's gonna give them ability as a group if they want to do some tree planting, some things on that as a solution. So that's one thing. On the turnpike wall, just a little bit, we hosted, I think, two of those meetings when before the turnpike went in here at the town hall. We had FDOT over here and we had the Turnpike Authority here and all the representatives. And basically, you know, we, everybody, obviously the Charles of Montverde were screaming for a wall. They just said, you know, there's a strict criteria they follow and it just didn't meet it and wasn't close to meeting it, so the wall wasn't gonna get built. They said, you know, that's how the funding is secured when it meets a certain criteria, and Sean can correct me. I know I've asked Sean to go back and ask the Turnpike Authority. I don't think he's, you know, made any progress. I think everybody's been screaming about it. So really, at this point, what it is, it's, it's a, it's probably more politics and it's probably at the state level where the politics need to be played. And I would encourage the residents, they really need to get their state representatives involved because they're the ones who can push the funding. Cause that's gonna be your best solution. I, I think it's having the state representatives who actually have some funding control over the Turnpike Authority to get angry with the Turnpike Authority to maybe consider doing that. Sean, do you wanna add anything to that?
Yeah, there's a long history with the, with the Turnpike Authority. First of all, I'm not on the Turnpike Authority.
I've read your website.
Yeah, Central Florida Expressway. We have a lot more leeway on CFX roads to put in walls and I'm very sympathetic. I know we. We've been out there and walked and it is noisy, so I, there's no denying that for sure. As Paul had said, yeah, there's been many attempts to try to get them to put the wall in and change their, change their, their thinking on that. They have not, to this point. We're gonna be happy to keep trying to push it, to put them, to do a wall, that's not a problem. We tried, we tried to do it on the other side, a little closer to Claremont and really haven't had any luck. That was maybe a year ago. We, meaning the commission, some of our staff. So we'll be happy to try to go back and keep pushing them on that. They may change things. Sometimes they, they will change after the road's construction's done, it doesn't make sense, but they, it's, it's, it's still possible. We'll try that, we can try landscaping. I do believe, as Paul has indicated, we've been, we've done some inspections. We think that maybe Polte hasn't done all the landscaping that they're supposed to, so we'll look into that as well.
Have you reviewed the phosphate wall? Because I believe if they, if they receive a code violation, a PUD violation on the phosphate wall, maybe they'd be more inclined to meet with us as a township.
Yeah.
So the phosphate wall's in phase two of the punch list, so that hasn't been completed. But I have been out there, it's in compliance. The wall itself is five-eleven. And what, it depends on where the grade is that comes up to the wall. But if you measure from the top, the bottom of the wall to the top of the wall where it's open, it'll be five-eleven and it's usually core, which is correct. Then your pillars in the middle will be six foot, because when towns are required, when cities require a six-foot wall, you can't go over six foot, they build a six-three, they'll make you cut it down in a lot of cities. So generally what you'll see is, is the main panels at five-eleven and your posts at six foot, but it depends on where the grade comes up to the wall at the finished product.
I've personally measured five in different places and I can show you pictures of it.
I've measured it too. The panels are five-eleven, but it just depends where the grade gets pushed up to the wall, is what I'm getting at. So the backside of the wall may be a different grade than what the other side of the wall is, is all I'm getting at. So I, I mean, from an inspection standpoint, our engineers have looked at it, we're gonna do a punch on phase two, but my guess it'll be.
It's four hundred residents, we need help.
Who's the state representative, Sean? Tyler?
Yurkowski.
Taylor?
Yeah, so, and we have, we've, we've tried with Representative Yurkowski, yeah, that we could try that again, for sure. As Paul was right, I mean, it has to be, you know, the FDE, you know, I, I mean, I certainly know the director. You know, she's tried to accommodate some things that have happened with the construction in this mainline segment, which is the first, their first project, eight hundred million dollars, I believe it costs. So they've had issues and we've been able to work with her on some things. So we'll certainly try that, but, you know, they will answer, of course, to, who sets their budget, and that's state representatives and our senator too. So I would encourage Rep. Yurkowski and Senator Trudell.
Well, I, I looked at the sound study of two thousand eight that the turnpike did. It was based upon, it basically said after the expansion, we would never have desblevels over seventy. So, and then after that, they moved it closer and they moved it higher and, and here we are at ninety. So, so the, the turnpike study, it was so false, the two thousand eight turnpike study after, and, and the turnpike's not even fully expanded yet, so it's only getting higher.
Yeah. No, I mean, I, I think, I personally agree, I don't know why they didn't put the wall in to begin with.
So, I mean, we have four hundred residents that, whose children have problems going outside, that can actually go outside for more than an hour on the playgrounds because, like I said, it's a, it's a sign of a subway in the afternoon. So, so help us, help us with the bamboo, help us, help us as much as you can with the turnpike, help us as much as you can with the builder. Would be forever grateful.
Okay, I'm, I'm, we'll talk about it. Thank you very much. I'm sorry you're dealing with that.
Yeah, Sean, if we could maybe, why don't we reach out to Yurkowski and see if we can give them some contact information and Trudeau to see if we can maybe get them working directly with them. I think, again, that's probably gonna be the best solution, to at least address the wall and see if we can make some progress on it.
Absolutely.
I never understood why they don't use the dirt and just make, put, make it a hill, you know?
Yeah. Well, and that's some of it too, you know, the, the turnpike's not done, so it's at different phases where, you know, two lanes are screeching down. It's gonna be four lanes, I'm sure they're gonna probably have landscaping on their side between the turnpike and, you know, they generally put, that's not gonna be a huge amount, but.
I guess if we nag.
It's also not a finished product either.
Well, we were told that, we were told it was gonna be enhanced landscaping. So some of this, I do wanna see specifically what they're talking about with that.
So we just nag, nag them to death right now so they add more there? We can start stuff like that.
Right.
Yeah.
And we'll see what Polte's supposed to.
Should we go talk to them? No, I don't know. Isn't that right on the turnpike? The authority right there with the trupus?
Uh, so if you wanna go visit the Turnpike Authority, they're at the next rest stop down, Turkey Lake. That's where their headquarters is.
Yeah, that's where, yeah, where the FHP is.
That's right.
So in lieu of the.
May I make an observation?
Yeah.
Turnpike is in three phases. Does anybody know where the third phase ends up at? Seventy-five. Do you know who's south of seventy-five? This big place called The Villages. Now, I would be tickled to death to see The Villages get sound barrier walls and nobody else would because somehow funding just miraculously showed up. That would, to me, be a class act lawsuit that would be, how do you justify that? Because in my travelings to Miami on the turnpike, West Palm Beach County is doing a lot of expansion on the turnpike. And when they're doing this expansion near West Palm Beach, you know what they got along the walls alongside the road? Sound barriers. Now, I find it kind of insulting that the eight hundred million dollar project for phase one doesn't have that included, but down in Dade and Broward County, they've got sound barrier walls all over the place. Just an observation. If you're driving down to Miami International Airport, wanna take that drive one day, you'll be surprised what you see once you get past State Road seventy going south. Fort Pierce, West Palm Beach, Stewart, all that stuff down through there, there's barrier walls all over the place. And all these wonderful little village communities that butt up against the turnpike have probably sixty-foot or taller walls that are there. And there's trucks down there all the time loading these things, putting the pillars in and dropping them in. So just an observation from an old country boy, but that's what I kind of, it's amazing when you go south of Highway fifty in Orange County, what do you see? Pillar walls. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, and again, you know, that's, I think that's the politics of, I think, why we need to get Trudeau and Yurkowski involved in it. And really, the goal is to try to get them to do another sound study and not push a sound wall, but let's get another sound study. As if it shows it, then that'll lead to the wall.
Senator Backsley up in Marion County has been a good one in the senate who helps too, so you can throw his name in that hat too. Because it'll come through their neck of the woods on the progress forward, so anyway.
I wouldn't mind going meeting them and just see what they got to put on the table too.
Well, the good news is, is that they say the session will end sometime, sometime between now and the end of June, so you could, which is, if you know Florida Legislature, that's, that's record. That'd be a record for them to go that long and they may this year, I'm saying that a little, trying to be funny, but you could go visit them here locally. They have local offices and that's what I would encourage.
Hey Sean, I'm gonna throw one more thing out to you, talking about visiting Florida League of Cities. Any power there? I mean, that's a lobby group that's second to none for cities. That would be another one, I don't know.
Yeah, they may be a good resource to help too.
Paul, I'd, Paul, I'd be curious on where the builder is with the, with the PUD and how if they're in full compliance?
With the what?
The PUD.
I mean, phase, phase one has been punchless, they're, phase one, phase two, we're in the punchless yet.
Any ETA on that?
Um, probably here in the next few weeks, we'll do the punch list on phase two.
Okay, thank you.
So that'll include the phosphate wall, which I believe, on the day two, but, you know, I've been, I've looked at it, it's, it's gonna, yeah, I mean, the engineers gotta sign off on it, but it'll probably comply.
All right, we'll move that forward and definitely stay on top of it.
Yes, come on.
Farmer Banks, Helfrich, Clay Road District, South Lake County. Farm tip of the day, loquats are also considered to be Japanese plums. They are the orange fruit, orange or yellow. They are ornamental, they are also fruit-bearing. And you have about fourteen days of harvest with them. After that, they fall off the tree. Mayor, council distinguished guests, newly elected mayor of Groveland, in his swearing-in speech, made two points perfectly clear and it seems to be apropos for tonight. One is that the citizens are the leaders and two, that who they choose, the representatives, are the servants. And I cannot agree more with him. Once a year, in some municipalities, once every two years, in county, state and federal elections jurisdictions, there is an election. The citizens decide, they vote, and they choose who they want to be their representatives, who they want to be their servants. You all on the dais are chosen. You're chosen to navigate us, we the people, through the intricacies of government, the constitutional republic, democracy government for which we have. Twenty years ago, my mother called up her state representative and asked her to, for, for an issue she had. She spoke with the assistant. The assistant said, he'll get back to you within twenty-four hours. Within one hour, he had called her up. My mom expressed to her her issue. He said, don't worry, I'll take care of it in twelve hours. In one hour, that issue was resolved. That man, that representative, ended up going to Tallahassee and being the Speaker of the House. So I leave you with this one question, and that is, and this involves everybody, even us out here. If we are not here to serve, what exactly are we here for? I am Farmer Banks Helfrich. Thank you for allowing me to speak. May you all be blessed.
Thank you very, thank you much Farmer Banks. Anybody else wanna talk to the council?
Judy Lay, one seven three two eight First Street. I think Anita made it very clear that you all have got to get together and decide who that fifth council member's gonna be. That person is a placeholder, okay? And out of the six of us, none of us check all the boxes. We might not even check half of the boxes. But whoever you put in there is only gonna be there perhaps temporarily. If there's any of the six of us that are not running in November, then that would narrow it down to one or two. Why do I say that? Because if you put somebody on council that's gonna run, that's gonna be an advantage to the other ones that are running. Because the people of, of the town are gonna go, you know, I really like that person. And they're gonna keep that person in. Or they're gonna say, I really think they're doing a really bad job, okay? But it's a disadvantage to the ones that are running. So you four have got to get together somehow in your mind and keep your personal feelings aside from who you favor and pick the person that you think is the best one to fill that spot until November. And like I said, if any of the six of us are not running, then that's the person you need to put in there so that it's not a disadvantage to the ones that are running. Thank you.
Good say, thank you. Anybody else?
Mike Witten, one seven six three five Broad Street. I totally agree with what Judy just said right there. Y'all are starting to look dysfunctional. You know, I'm not blaming anybody, I'm just saying, as a citizen, I sit here and watch this, it's not right. Nominate somebody that's to fulfill this term till November, the elections, and just get somebody that's not gonna run for office. We got some qualified people, grab somebody that's been here ten years that knows the layout, you know? But we gotta do something here. This is just, it doesn't look right. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Anybody else? All right, we're gonna go ahead and move on then, do the town manager's report real quick.
Thank you, Mayor. I got a few things to just report to you. Wanted to let you know, I had to replace the septic tank at the beauty salon or I guess the old Public Works building, it's a beauty salon that we rent, we retake, replaced the, we ended up being able to save the tank and just replace the lines in there. We were pumping every week, so, yeah, we were, say, putting out more than we were taking in on that. So that, that did get replaced, I just wanted to let you know, if you saw some work over there, just as a heads up. It's kind of an emergency because it had to get done. When we went to put the final trim on the post office, the, when they put the, took the boards off, you know, we put the stone up there, the four pillars were rotted, like bad. And so, long story short, we rewooded those before we put the new trim up around those and got that fixed. So it was just a little, something else I just wanted to let you know, that got kinda caught through the process, but we got it fixed. I wanted to just personally thank all of the volunteers that helped with our hundred-year celebration picnic for the town. That was a beautiful event. And also personally, thank all the volunteers that helped with the butterfly garden. It was great to see so many community members come out and lend a hand and just be willing to step up, so that was a, that was really a beautiful thing to see. I am tentatively looking at closing our mini library here on July fourteenth to start the process of transitioning over to the new library with a possible date sometime in August, is what we're tentatively looking at. Still waiting for a few things to get done, but I'll be firming that up and sending notices out to the community. So during that time, you'll have to check out from some of the other surrounding libraries, because we'll be in transition. I think I mentioned the, that was one of my things, it's Polte HOA, I did reach out to them, like council instructed me to do. And they weren't interested in having that meeting as a part of the HOA meeting, they wanted that just for residents to work at. And I did wanna apologize, the normal grant review sheet that you guys have in your packets, I'll be emailing that to you probably in the next day or two. I was taking some time off last week, so I wouldn't, I didn't have time to review it before it would've went in your packets. I definitely wanna review that to make sure there's any issue, but that'll be coming forward. And that's all I got on that one.
I was gonna ask you to, I was looking at the balances, did we send the county back their money?
No, not yet. The county, we reached out to the county to send that to them and they asked, they wanted to review all their, all the numbers we had in our spreadsheet before we sent the check, because they didn't wanna make, they wanted to make sure there was no issues. So I have to follow with my, I think they've agreed that the amount is correct. And so now we just gotta process that, so.
Yeah, 'cause I was thinking it'd be lower.
Yeah, it should, it should be correct, knowing half less on that. So that was at the county's request. They wanted to verify all of our invoices and numbers and make sure our numbers were what they had on their end, so. All right, next I have the capital project update. I think I put a copy of that in your books. So this'll be a, a new little thing we'll do at every regular council meeting, just real quickly go over all the capital projects. I'll go through them. If you have any questions on them, then if you just wanna ask me at the end, or you can stop me, whatever's more convenient for you. And just more just to hit the highlights, I'll go over more details with you. If you need to get ahold of me, we can go over details. So on the library, the library's progressing pretty good. We're working on some of the final trim items inside, such as the electric and HVAC is working in there. Most of the lighting is in, things along that line. We're in the process of getting cabinets installed and going through that. We did kind of a first rough clean in it and had the crew come in and do the clean, so it's, it's really coming along nicely on that end. On the library, emergency generator, that's in design and engineering with Woodburn Kern, that's gonna be part of the SHAFI grant that we have. So we started design process on that. The outdoor park bathrooms, those are tiled and the fixtures are in. We're still waiting to get a septic permit on that, is really the next thing we have to do, then we can put the finished trims inside. Obviously, we'll wanna have it ready for, for a day before we get done with that. The small water storage tank and pump house, I believe you saw that at the butterfly garden, I think I saw some of you peeking in there. So that, that got, that got installed. It's amazing, the, the concrete footer's about almost six foot deep on that thing and it's four feet wide. I've never seen so much concrete. But that, that portion of the project's done. Now the town's going to build the pump house and then they'll come back in and install the pumps for it. Then it's obviously gonna sit dry until we decide which way we wanna go to use it, so engineers will be working on that.
Our, our inspection company is doing the checks on that, right?
Yeah, so I'll have, I'll have our engineers will come out and take a look at it. It is warranted and it's a glass line, but it'll, at the end of the project, they'll come and do a final, because sometimes that glass line will get scratched and that'll need to be repaired.
I'm just thinking with this, with all that water weight on that six foot?
Yes.
That would be a mess if something happened.
Yeah, we, we had a, we had the engineer come out and do the compaction testing, you know, required a minimum ninety-eight. Our, our dirt crew out there actually got a hundred and eighteen percent compaction, which I'm not sure how you do that, but that's what the engineers came back and said. So we, we got very good compact soil in there and the engineer and it's designed, Chuck was out there working with them too.
So if something happened, that would be that engineer's insurance?
I don't, I don't know that one for sure. I would assume that they would have some liability to it. I mean, they put these things in all over the country like every week, so.
Yeah, I'm just wondering. What would you think? What would you think, Anita?
Yeah, we'll pull the contract. I think there's warranty that goes with the, with the product that we are receiving, but we would have to look at the contract. I mean, they're, they have professional liability insurance.
Yeah, okay.
Hey, Paul, a lot of people, when we did the walk around the butterfly garden, were asking how big capacity of the tank.
I don't remember. I think it's a little over 100,000 gallons. I don't remember that whole thing off the top of my head. I apologize. I'll have to go back and look at that. It's a pretty cool-looking tank.
Anybody in here remember Petticoat Junction?
Don't go there. Don't go there.
Okay. When you look at that, you've got to think Petticoat Junction.
I don't.
I do. I just see all three of them up there waving as the train goes by.
Petticoat's over there.
Our community building, we're going to do a little discussion tonight on that. So no, no updates on that yet. The Lake County, new Lake County fire station, Patty has issued, or has issued the permit, so we're waiting on them to pay their fees and get that processed. So it's, it's almost officially permitted on that end. The Kirk Park playground, I'm going to be working on, we're going to have a bitching committee next week. I'll be working with them to kind of do some design that's in our general budget to put another playground at the park. Ridgewood Avenue, this will be in Mag Terrace. We're putting the ADA sidewalks that come down to Ridgewood, and then we're putting a sidewalk from Ridgewood to Lake Street. And that should get, can start it here probably in the next two or three weeks. We're just really waiting for the surveyor to get out there, so. Porter Avenue, our First Street storm project, working with Porter and Kern. We should have that project, so that's going to do the stormwater along First Street and a part of Porter, I think up to Third Street. Be redoing the streets, the curbs, and putting new storm, or putting the first phase. We're going to do the stormwater as a, as a second phase and just get the, the collection system done. So that is scheduled to be put out the bid in June, so we're working on that.
Is that going to get the, that area repaved?
Yeah, repave will be part of that project, correct.
So, listening to our conversation before, $19.8 million worth of stormwater work to do. A lot of that is going to be roads, our streets that we're fixing the sides of them, so we're going to be repaving that area?
Yeah, so if, not necessarily all the funds, but yeah, where we have to redo the roads to collect the stormwater, then some of the roads will get done. So for instance, you know, Lake, Lakeside's coming up, that whole road will get repaved as a part of the storm project. So right now, all, First Street gets repaved and rubbing curb put in, and new ditches along the side will kind of be upgraded, and everything will be able to flow into a future new underground detention area at the park. And that, that project's actually a part of, not a part of the $19 million project. That project's a part of the other $4.2 million grant that we got to prevent sea level rise.
That's Lake Street?
Yes. No, that's, that's First Street.
First Street, okay.
That's First Street too, so.
So, so we have $19.8 million worth of stormwater money?
Yeah. Well, we actually got another $4.3 million too on top of that, so we've got about $23 million. Let's see.
Boat ramp.
The boat ramp. Nothing to report on that. We're basically waiting for OSCU to submit their site plan and get toward a final plat so we can get the right of way to do anything on that.
And there's $400,000 for that, isn't there?
Yeah, we got, we got about $400,000-some thousand. I think 450 budgeted for that project to do the boat ramp.
Multiple people, multiple.
Correct. We got grants from Lake County Water Authority, from Lake County Parks, from Department of Environmental Protection, and I think we also have a state appropriation for that. Yeah, so we got four different sources for that money. Truska Park and Dock, so we're, we're still working with FEMA in that process. It's, I believe Sandy has another meeting set up here either this week or next week with them to go with a different grant manager over there or a program manager. We've tentatively got everything through the first phase and cleared. We're trying to figure out what they will cover on the dock, and they're actually going to come out and give us an estimate if they built it, how much they would give us if they use their contractors versus us giving them a bid or a price, which it should be a lot more in theory because federal government does everything expensive. So we're waiting for that process to go through. It's been slow because every two weeks it seems like they have a new program manager there. So we just get somewhere with one and it's handed off to somebody else. So it's been kind of a revolving door process, but we're, we're working through that. It's probably going to take a little bit longer than what we would normally take to get the funds.
Eighth and Ninth.
Yeah, the 455 Storm and Street sidewalk project, so that's, that's the big huge project for the $19 million. So that's still in the facility planning stage, so our Woodburn Kern team is working on that. We're hoping toward the middle of June, somewhere in that ballpark, we'll, we'll have a draft of that facility plan where we can start getting it up to DEP to get approval. So, so that, that's ongoing. So I've, I've been getting some stuff back and forth and working with them on that as well. Eighth and, and Temple Street, redo streets and sidewalk in the storm project. So that right now is just in the concept stage until the OSCU developments get to their final plat process, basically. Well, one generator replacement. As we mentioned at the last meeting, Sandy was able to get the, a final sign-off or approval for the project. So now it has to go into whoever's the final person that does all the final reviews to actually sign off to authorize the money. So there's lots of layers. So it's in the last phase of the process. I'm, you know, hopefully here in the next couple of months, we'll be turned loose to replace the generator. This is at our old well. We, our generator's bad there, so that'll get us a new generator in there. And I think it's an 80/20 grant is what that one is. The elevated water storage tank, so the plans are done on that. We have submitted the facility plan to DEP. They've had it for about two weeks now. So we're hoping to hear something here by the end of the month, what else we need to amend on that facility plan. And once we get that, we can put that out the bid. So tentatively, probably looking, hopefully on the 1st of July, end of July, to go out on bid for the new water storage tank. That's the 300,000 gallon ones. The redundant upper fluoridine well, that's the exact same thing, so that's in that facility plan. We're just waiting for them to get approval. Plans are done on that as well, and it's, I'm ready to bid. So again, we're hoping in that late June, July sometime, we could get that out to bid. The new fluoridian lower offer, that's a part of that. Grant project as well, so we're, we're waiting for the facility plan to get approved, then we have, then we can turn our engineer off on design for that one. The consumptive use permit, our Woodburn Kern team is continuing to work on that and work with DEP. They're preparing their final round of responses. There's, you know, I think we're in our third round of responses back and forth. So we're getting close to hopefully getting wrapped up and get a final, here's what your permit is. And I'll have a little bit more updated on that probably at the next meetings. We'll be a little further along on that. The water line upsizing loops and hydrants, so we've started engineering on that. And what I've instructed our engineers to do, we're going to engineer as much as we can as a phase. And once we get the facility plan approved by DEP, hopefully again in the next couple of weeks, then we'll, whatever we have designed, we'll go ahead and stamp that up together and put that out the bid, and they'll finish the phase two of the design of the upsizing and looping of the lines. So this, this project affects almost the whole part of town. Anywhere where we have undersized lines, such as Gladys, there's two-inch lines all over the place, or some four-inch lines. There's hydrants in the older part of town, Porter, Broad Street. All those would potentially be replaced, and lines would be upsides. We have places where we don't have loops in town. There's places such as Mag Terrace that doesn't have any, there's Hillside, and those areas all need loops to help the water flow better and keep the pressure up and also give us more redundancy if we have a loop break. So that's a nice project that'll affect the entire part of town. Let's see. And that's all I have, and I just listed the things that were complete. When I put it complete, it's kind of about a 90% or 95%. There's still always some little things to do. Any questions?
Huge thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any more questions? Okay. Let's go ahead and move on. No fire department reports inside your booklet? Anything for the town attorney?
In the next few meetings, we'll start bringing forward some of the new legislation. As the governor signs items that affect the town, we'll, I'll be reporting on some of those items along, I'm sure with Sean, on any planning items. And that's it.
Thank you very much.
Question for Anita. Question for you, Anita. Since the state legislature neither aid or nade on the CRA sunset, I'm assuming that's still active and potentially down the road, that'll come back to council, potentially, possibly?
If council wants to bring it back, then council would have to give us direction to bring that back.
Okay. Thank you.
All righty. Town planer?
Good evening. This is kind of a typical report. We've been reviewing the usual zoning clearances for pools, fences, new houses. Seems to be a lot of pools in the last 30 days or so, and we're gearing up to review the two developments coming in. I'll be busy doing that over the next couple of months and bringing it forward to you very soon.
It's going to slow down after that. To nothing.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And our county commissioner?
Yeah, so good evening. I have a gift for you. Want to give each one of you a copy.
Is it $800 billion for the wall?
No, it isn't. I wish it'd be like a wall. That would be, that sound wall. I would love to do that, but this is called the New Yard, the New Yard Pattern Book. If you remember the last time I told you I was speaking at the Outside CoLab, so I had that speaking engagement. Well-attended in Claremont. The place was filled pretty much, the city, city center. And what they're trying to do is improve the built environment as we continue to grow. There's efforts on how to manage growth in Florida, both in the built environment, so what's being built, and then obviously what you hear me talk a lot about with the Wildlife Corridor and getting open spaces protected permanently. So the reason for this, and it's always good to give reasons because understand why people ask, "Why are we going to like the 55% sod requirement?" You know, instead of just saying it because it's because it's because, you know, it's 55%. There's always a, I think it's important to explain why and why some of the codes are changing in Florida, becoming stringent and will be much different than what we've been used to. And really, quite frankly, it boils down to water. The 55% is, as the council really sort of has their hands tied because you have a CUP, a consumptive use permit, that you're capped off. And so the state of Florida is not allowing any more withdrawals than what your current level is. So this is not just Montverde, it's every city, every county across Florida. So there's not going to be any more additional allocation. So the only way you can do that is beat by, meet it, meet the demand for future growth. And even if you did nothing in this town, remember you have several hundred unit vacant lots that just, you know, possibly could be built on. Let's just say even if it's 100. So you're going to have growth. There's people that come to Florida. You're going to increase that demand, but you're not going to be given any more water from that allocation. So what do you do? You have to come up with alternative water supply or you come up with conservation. Let's just talk about this as conservation effort. This is based off data, so it's not just pulling, you know, pulling it out of thin air and saying, "Do this because we say so." This has been data done by the University of Florida IFAS over the last three to four years in conjunction with the Outside CoLab, which Cherry Lake has been a big part of that, as well as bringing in the developers, quite frankly, to show them sort of a light on this. So it's based off of what actually works for water use and what actually saves money, will save money. So this is a pattern book. This is something that the, I will tell you, I just wanted to give you an example, this to think about. Nothing, nothing to do tonight on it, obviously, but this is something that the Lake County is going to, in some form or another, adopt. And when you see this, this will be, for instance, the requirement of 75% landscape requirement for native landscape within new lots. So we're talking about new subdivisions. The 30 to 40, if there are 30-foot lots, maybe in some places, 40, 50, or 60, or 70-foot lots. This has all, this has, provides all the examples of how to landscape that properly according to the new code, which in this case would range from about 15% to 25% total sod requirements. Very different than what many of us who've moved to Florida, maybe grew up with big sod lawns and everything like that. But this is the direction that Lake County is going, and so I wanted to just share that with you. And again, the other side of this is not just from water, water protection, but it's also because if you're going to be buying all these lands and preserving all these lands, say for instance in Ferndale, like the town council did recently significantly, was significantly a part of. What you do on the outside in the Wildlife Corridor is affected, obviously, by how the built environment is. Using a lot more chemicals, you're using water in on native plants is going to affect what you, the taxpayers, have bought and tried to protect on the outside in the Wildlife Corridor. So it's trying to improve what we have on the built environment to protect the outside natural area. Enough of me. I just wanted to give you, this is a good, a nice little gift. You can read it, it's great reading, or you can just, if you can't sleep, you can read through it too. Either way. But that's all I have. We can get this on, I can get it, I can put it if you want, and we can put it on the website, absolutely, yeah.
Sean, I noticed here on additional contributors on the inside page, we are blessed with Cherry Lake crew, but also the third person down there, Brooke Moffis. Know her personally. She's at our Tiberius IFAS, University of Florida, and she is a knockout person for, this is what she does for Lake County residents on a consistency for many years. So it was good to see her name there. She's a great contributor.
Yeah, they've done a good job, of course.
All righty. Well, thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. All righty, I'll move to the council. Alan, do you have anything?
Sure, got a couple of things here. Paul, I've brought to my attention at, since Easter, we've got trees in the park that are, our oak tree replants are not doing well. And upon further inspection, with my ag background, we've got weed eater damage around the base of these trees, which will girdle these trees and kill them, and we're spending all this money on it. I would suggest that we either round up, which is not the greatest favor of, or round up so they're not having to get right beside it with a weed eater because they're tearing the dickens out of the bark of those trees, and that's just going to make them girdle and die. Or else put a raft of some kind around if they've got to get that close. I know old habits are hard to break. Secondly, I noticed during our, last week on the founder's celebration, our old stage on the eastern side, we've got some rotted wood, which I'm probably sure you're aware of, but it looks like some of that's potentially hanging on by its thread of its nails. And I hate for that to potentially fall down on somebody. It was just on that eastern side over here, it's pretty well rotted out due to the exposure from rain and the sun. And last week, I think last time we gathered, Councilman Womack mentioned about the sign going out of town by Bella Colina, the speed limit sign on the crest of the hill. And I see that, I guess Sean, the county, came through with their mowers and whacked that back pretty good by the bridge there, the underpass. So, and as a ha-ha note, a lot of my citrus growers, we were discussing what was this stuff that was falling out of the sky? Since January, we've been pumping it out of the ground with diesel and, and electric motors, so that was kind of neat to have rain. So I'm thankful for the God, the Lord above, to give us this rain. It's really perked things up, and I've talked to some of the guys in the fire department across the county, and they are real thrilled that their brush trucks aren't having to be on standby to run for fire control when fires break out, which we haven't had in Lake County of great need. So it's about what I got. Town looks good with the rain. It really perked things up, and I move back to the mayor.
All righty, Carol?
No, I'm, I'm good. Paul and I chatted earlier today, so you got all my questions answered.
All righty. Thank you, Joe.
I had a bunch of things I was going to talk about, but it's 9:30. I'll, I'll yield to you.
All righty. Well, I don't have anything either. All righty, let's keep moving. Financing report, the beginning balance is $6,65,852.69, and heading balance $6,108,478.35. Move on to consent agenda. Everybody's okay with the minutes? Need a motion?
I make a motion at the, can we make a package deal or we need to go one by one?
No, you can do more.
The amended minutes from council meeting on March 11th.
And you can make a motion just to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion for Speedway's consent agenda to be approved as posted.
Second.
Home, favor say aye.
Aye.
Against, say nay. Just have it. Move on to our community building and have a discussion. We have to decide if we want to take a change. We have to decide if we wanna take a chainsaw, cut off part of it, and rebuild it. Let's plan it better.
Sure. Mayor, you just made a sign authority, you wanna move this to the next council meeting, I'd be fine with that, too.
Okay, let's forward just into the next council meeting. Let's move on to Resolution twenty-twenty-five-one-seventy-five, if you would, please.
A resolution of the town council of the town of Montverde, Florida, approving the town of Montverde comprehensive plan, I'm sorry, comprehensive vulnerability assessment and adaptation plan adopted dated April two thousand twenty-five pursuant to the Resilient Florida Program Planning Grant DEP Agreement Number Twenty-four PLN Thirty-Nine, providing an effective date.
Is Sean gonna explain this?
Actually, our engineers are gonna come forward and give this presentation. And we do need to do this as a public hearing, as a piece of the plan before we can turn it to DEP, so I'll let you take it.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Amanda Boone with Water and Current. I am the project manager for this project, and I will try to keep this brief, but if you have any questions, by all means, please interrupt me. Go ahead and move to the next slide. So, this is the vulnerability assessment that we have done, and this is a grant that you received from the Resilient Florida Program. So, the purpose here is to assess the vulnerability of your critical infrastructure, its risk to flooding, sea level rise, and really to development, develop and implement those solutions to improve resiliency. So, we did look at all critical assets. The critical assets fall into one of four main categories that you see here on the screen, your transportation, critical infrastructure such as water and sewer, your critical community and emergency facilities, and then also natural, historical, and cultural resources, which is where parks fall. We do look at several storm events, several different scenarios, six to be exact. Now, you will not see every kind of storm that you will experience in town represented in this report. We are only looking at six, and storm events come in many different flavors. So, we're looking both a hundred-year and a five-hundred-year event across three different planning horizons. The current year, the near future, which for you is defined as the year twenty-forty, the far future, which is defined as twenty-seventy. Now, the reason to look at further planning horizons is, let's say you showed a wastewater treatment facility that was, you know, not resilient, and you wanted to do something with it, then you would want to look at the life cycle of that facility, okay? So, that's why you look at far future events. So, your precipitation scenarios are showing here, again, you have the one-hundred and five-hundred year across three different planning horizons, and you see down there the twenty-four hour depth and inches for each one of those events. So, that is what we modeled to meet the requirements of this grant. As you move through the assessment, you will see a discussion on flood risk, and whether you are talking about critical assets, parcels, or roadway, we look at that flood risk in one of two different ways. We're either looking at a maximum depth, where we talk about depths ranging from two to greater than two. For a depth of zero, that's a minimal, or no flood risk, and anything over two is gonna be extreme. For parcels and roadways, we look at a percent inundation, how much of that parcel, how much of that roadway segment is inundated. So, again, a zero representing minimal, and then greater than seventy-five percent inundation would be extreme.
Real quick, council, and I'm gonna pause you, Amanda, just, just a little background of why we're doing this, real quick, 'cause I could see some people looking at it, like, what, what is this? Originally, we did receive a DEP grant for stormwater projects as a part of the sea level rise and resiliency, it was one-point-eight million dollars. That was the first grant cycle, I think, that was ever conducted. So, DEPs come back, and they've given us a grant in order to do this planning study to identify the needs. Depending on what, what the results of this, this puts the town in a placeholder, basically, or it has the ability now to apply for grants to fix things that this study may find, and it kinda puts us up, it's basically, I would say, you have to do this portion to get to the next step to apply for grants for money. So, this is, this is what gets us the ability now to apply for that future grants for stormwater projects.
Correct. The, the requirement is to do a vulnerability assessment in order to be eligible to apply for implementation grant money.
And this was grant-funded as well?
Correct.
Okay.
So, when we start looking at the flood risk assets, we then have to think about the consequence of failure. In other words, it's not, every asset is not created equal. The example I love to give here is, it is much more impactful to you if an emergency operations center floods versus if a park floods. Yes, both matter, but do they both matter equally? So, we assign a consequence of failure, four being the most important, and one being, I won't say the least important, but lesser importance of consequence of failure. When we take flood risk, and we take consequence of failure, and we take those two scores that you saw, and we multiply them together, we get a sensitivity rating. These ratings are then broken down into classifications, and this is what you'll see moving through the report for what is sensitive and what needs to have adaptation planning for it. So, here, you know, we talked about that consequence of failure, what does that actually end up meaning? So, an example, a school with a consequence of failure rating of three is inundated by a depth of one and a half feet, which is a flood risk rating of three. So, you get a sensitivity rating of nine. A fire station has a consequence of failure of four, so higher consequence of failure. It's inundated by a lesser depth, only point-seven-five feet, which is a flood risk rating of two, so it has a sensitivity rating of eight. Both those examples are a high sensitivity classification. So, that's what you're seeing when you talk about flood risk versus consequence of failure versus sensitivity. Once we did the modeling to see what was sensitive, we then started to look at, was there any trend in what we were seeing? Did we see a lot of roadways, a lot of critical assets, a lot of parcels that were all in one area that were vulnerable? And we did identify two. The first one is here in the area of Montverde Academy, and here you not only have some buildings and a lift station at Montverde Academy, which is private, you also have Seventh Street, several segments of that, which are county-owned, and then Porter Avenue, which resides within your city limits as a municipal street. Focus Area Two is in the area of Four Lakes, and all of these assets are indeed private, but there is a information sharing that can happen with this as well, so. We then look at the adaptation plan, things come in multiple different categories here. We do identify some regulatory, and by the way, I don't expect you to be able to read the tiny print on this slide. There are some regulatory and planning efforts that are advised and listed here. You have your projects from Focus Area One and Focus Area Two, and then we also did identify some other additional sensitive municipal assets that were not within the focus areas that you may wanna consider for implementation funding as well. And the reason we include these is because we recognize you're going to put forth probably the most effort towards municipally-owned assets, and it really doesn't matter if they're in a focus area or not. They're still sensitive. So, we've listed those here. So, where we are at is, I am, of course, here tonight presenting this draft vulnerability assessment report and adaptation plan to you, for your consideration. What would be next is for you to, hopefully, accept this plan. I will then move forward with coordinating with your local mitigation strategy working group to get their support of this as well. It does need to be supported by them as part of the grant, and I will work with them to do that. We'll get all the submittals and deliverables turned into FDEP, and starting on, I believe, July first, the implementation funding portal will open and closes promptly on September first. And that is what I have for you this evening. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
No, great job. Thank you very much. Anybody got a question?
I do.
Go ahead.
Can you, maybe this might be Paul's question, I'm not sure, but can you point to any, I wrote this one down, can you point to any specific ways this plan could change permitting, zoning, or capital planning in the next one to three years?
It would have effect on capital planning, so if we go after a project and get funding for the project, then we'll put it in our capital improvement plan. For, for instance, there were some areas on Porter and Seventh Street that were identified, which we may be taking care of other grants, so that would be a target area where we can do some stormwater projects, so we would obviously include that as part of our capital improvement plan, if we really get grant money for that.
Go ahead.
All right. I'm good for right now.
Okay. You got anything?
I'm good.
Carol?
It was a good, good report, thank you. Pretty good depth.
Anything, one more?
So, this will be used to get future grants?
Correct.
Okay. Can we add a stipulation, or is there a stipulation into this, that future grants have to be voted on by council first before we apply for them, or is that already in place? Does that make sense to you?
No, council doesn't have any stipulation on that.
Okay. Could we add a stipulation to that, for this one?
Well, that probably would be something we'd have to bring, if council wants to do that, we'd have to bring another resolution forward.
Okay.
Do that.
Do you have a rationale behind that? Just curious.
Yeah, that council has more control over what grants we're going after. I think that we ultimately should sort of say, this is a grant we want, you know, be presented to us, you know, a list, you know, here's, here's a list of grants for us.
I was gonna say, I am not familiar with grants that are out there.
No, correct. I'm saying that they bring you a stack of, you know, well, not say stack, but a list of grants, which, you know, do you want us to apply for all of them, some of them, those kind of things.
It's part of the issue, and I understand what you're saying, so any of the grants, we can apply for them, see if we get them, you know, generally, historically, Montverde would never receive any grants because our median household income is so high. It's just we're such an unusual cycle, this lasts for three, four years, if we need grants, it'll be minimal. But sometimes the cycle when those are open, for instance, the water grant, we got the Shaffee Grant for the water in the storm, so it's that thirty-something million we have, was it less than two weeks, Sean, or Scott? That portal was only open two weeks. So, it would've been impossible to get a meeting, and it was over Christmas. We applied Christmas Eve, I think it was due. So, you just kinda put yourself, so council can always not take a grant, and you don't always get the grant you apply for. Really, going forward, I, and since I know the portal opens in July, I don't anticipate this year applying for the grant, because we're really just extended on the amount of grants we need to get some of these projects done. I'm not really looking for grants unless it's just like something, hey, we really need for streets, or sidewalks, or something along that line. We'll, we'll put some things in, but we're, right now, our capacity is, we're beyond capacity to, we gotta take care of what we got.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else have a question?
Question for you, in these grants, I know that relates to flooding, but I'm on the other side of the coin. In Florida, where our aquifer is sinkholes, would they be covered under anything like this? Gotcha, Scott.
Some of the quality enhancement grants, would they not?
This specific grant is really more geared towards, towards weather events and the impacts associated with that. I don't think, I don't think the word sinkhole appears anywhere in the guidance on that one. So, yeah, not, not in this case.
I was just thinking, because our wet-dry cycle is such that they never show up until it's wet, then it's drying, and then, just what, surprise. So, just, that just hit me.
All righty, well, thank you very much. Appreciate your time coming up here and teaching us.
The mayor just says a part of this, if we can just do a quick public comment, if anybody wants a public comment, I'm not just asking you to vote on the resolution.
Anybody wanna talk about this? One at a time. All righty, no. So, move on back to council.
I have one more question, actually.
Go ahead.
The, we're not gonna be looking at a, this is a, we're not gonna be looking at a sewer system with this grant.
This is a stormwater vulnerability.
Just as mentioned, I'll just make sure, okay.
So, it could be used to harden sewer facilities, you know, the town has lift stations, and we have a sewer plant, obviously, it's outside the city limits for the hills of Montverde, so funds theoretically could be used to harden those facilities against flood.
Thanks, I just saw the word sewer.
I know, she used the evil word. I will correct her afterwards and make sure it never do that again.
We'll put a sign up. Don't use the word sewer.
I'll get it flashing on the screens.
Okay, so, we need a motion to?
I so move Resolution twenty-twenty-five-one-seventy-five be approved.
I got a motion, I need a second?
I'll second.
Hold, favor say aye?
Aye.
Gents say nay? As have it. If you would, please, Anita, twenty-twenty-five-dash-one-seventy-four.
A resolution of the town council of the town of Montverde, Florida, adopting a joint planning agreement with Lake County, Florida, as authorized pursuant to Sections one-sixty-three-point-zero-one and one-sixty-three-point-three-one-seven, one Florida statutes, providing for directions to the town clerk and providing for an effective date.
Now, Sean gonna explain this?
I probably will, he wasn't really involved in that, much of that negotiation, so, this is the joint planning agreement we've been working on for the last year and a half, and I, I put the marked up, the marked up copies in your book, so you can kinda see some of the changes, been going back and forth with the county. We are gonna ask you to table this tonight, but we wanna give the opportunity to get it in front of you to see if you had any more questions. The county has two other provisions they want to add to the agreement, and Anita could let you know what those are, if you're interested in hearing those tonight. But I just wanted to, to see if you had any questions on the JPA. So, really, the core of it, it kinda hits a couple areas. One is communication. How do we communicate better, specifically, when development is happening? Because in the past, there could be a development right outside the town of Montverde, and the town doesn't get to know about it till it's already approved, or vice versa, we have something going in town, the county doesn't know about it. So, this sets some standards, so we know ahead of time, right at the beginning, when there's development going on. So, as a council, you have the opportunity to go comment on those developments, object to those developments, or support those developments that are going on that could impact the town. And that's included anywhere within our one-eighty service district area, including the Ferndale area. It also addresses the Ferndale Protection Area, stating that it's set aside, that no one's gonna touch it, we're not gonna put utilities in it, we're not gonna develop it. So, it kinda flows with the ISBA as well. It also discusses how we jointly work together on permits for streets and right-of-way, since we have county roads going in town, just setting a better process so those go a little bit smoother, because sometimes in the past, those have taken a long time, and for, on both sides, for us to work through some of those things. Anita, do you wanna maybe hit a couple of the highlights on it, too?
So, the additional changes the county would like to add is an annexation notification provision. So, currently, under state law, prior to the first publication or notice in the newspaper that we're annexing property, we have to provide to the Board of County Commission a certified letter ten days before that notice, so the county is aware of it. This would add an additional requirement, that within ten days of receiving an application for annexation, we would provide the county with that initial notice. The other provision they are requesting to be added is a renegotiation paragraph, and it just states that the city or the county could at any time ask by written notice to the other party to renegotiate the agreement, and there would be a ninety-day negotiation period. And if we can't reach an agreement, then there's a statutory provision that would go into effect, which is a conflict resolution provision, and otherwise, the agreement, if no agreement's reached, then the current agreement would remain in effect. So, those are the additional changes, as well as changing the whereas provisions to mirror that of another JPA that was recently adopted. They're trying to keep the JPA agreements as uniform as possible, to the extent possible. So, those other provisions and the whereas clauses will be included in the next draft, and they're applicable. I mean, there's nothing unusual about them that I would say you should be concerned with.
Did this come out, I think, three years ago? We talked about, this was kind of a thing the mayor mentioned about with the hills, hills up there, where the county came in and didn't tell us, and we were saying, hey, we need to work with this. Is this kind of a resolution, or a meeting of the minds that the county finally, county finally woke up and said, hey, we need to be more friendly?
Yeah, so, the provision in here for that is that when the county receives an application within the area, or this town receives one, that we sit down and meet to review the application.
Yeah, prior to?
Unless the party's determined in writing that we don't need to meet. So, it does open, like Paul said, lines of communication better between the town and the county relating to development projects.
So, win-win for everybody?
Yes, I think that's a very good provision to have.
The MP? The MPO's involved, right?
The MPO is not a, a party or really affected by this, it's more with the county roads relating to how we can, we have to go through the right-ofway permitting process with the county to put things in their right-ofway, but it provides for, you know, the Green Mountain Scenic Byway has design standards for signs and street lighting, and we can ask the county to put those standards in, and if they don't have funding for it, then we can fund the difference if the town chooses, so if they're replacing something, and we want it to be upgraded, and they fund it, great, if they don't, then you could pay the difference, and they agree to put in the Green Mountain Scenic Byway standard fixtures.
Can we add a clause in here that's similar to what the county did to us, where we return the favor, we're proposed development or land use change within the JPA, that we get a forty-five days' notice? Are we able to add something like that?
What provision are you looking at?
No, the one you just had mentioned to Alan. About us notifying them.
That's the annexation one?
Right. Are we able to add in there, I'm sorry, maybe I was...
So, it, so the part about development, when they, there's an application received by either the town or the county, both parties are required to notify the other. So, if the county gets an application, like the hills of Montford happened, we would've gotten a notification of when that application came in, and we would sit down and talk about it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there a time limit that that notification has to be sent?
I believe it is ten days, but let me look.
That's what I got it down here, it was ten, I just wanted to be sure.
I kind of thought that, too, Carol, you know.
Yeah, I'm okay with...
We had a meeting this afternoon, forgot to tell you, but we told you the day after.
Yeah, I remembered that yesterday. Yeah. We're on the same page.
Could we add to that, could we add the number, is, are you saying, because I think that's a short number of days.
To receive a notice, I, I would rather receive it sooner rather than later.
I would say, like, you know, forty days out, thirty days out, when, you know, instead of them sitting on a notice, I would rather get something...
So, if the county has something planned, do you want to wait forty days before they notice us?
No, when, when, they give us forty-five days to take action on it.
So, this provides, on page eight of sixteen, under article five, under article four, the town and the county, within ten working days of receipt of any application or preliminary plans associated with application for a development order within the JPA, shall provide a copy of the application materials to the designated department, division, office of the other party. So, and then it says, the town staff and county staff must meet to discuss the effect of the development and comments in response to the application, unless the parties agree otherwise, that a meeting's not necessary. So, we do have that, it does also provide that the sta, town and the county staff shall provide to the other party, as applicable, its comments on those applications, within twenty working days of receiving the application.
Receiving the application, not necessarily the notice.
Well, it's the application, so town receives an application in, we have to, within ten days, send a copy of that application to the county. County receives an application in, and your boundaries, but it's in the JPA area, they have ten working days to provide the town with a copy of it, and then, we have twenty days to provide them com, our comments to the application, and they have twenty days to provide comments to us on any applications we receive.
That cover it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And that's, that's really good numbers, we want comments at the beginning, and not getting too far out, because we always got to remember, whether you love or hate developers, they do have rights, and there are some timelines within statutes that cities and counties have to, you just can't sit on stuff for the sake of sitting on stuff, and that seems to be getting tighter and tighter. One thing I want to point out, I, I think this was, a council's concern that Anita and I really worked hard to try to negotiate, it, it doesn't tie their hands completely, but it makes it clear, within the, within the JPA area, which is our 180 district, right, Anita, so our entire 180 district area, if the county approves this, the hills of Montford was brought up, four homes per acre, we put in this JPA agreement, anything, and this is for section C, anything within the JPA area in the county may not develop more than one home per acre development, instead of the four homes that we've got, the hills of Montford, one home per acre in the county, which is appropriate for county property, however, obviously, if they have current development rights, you know, current entitlements, well, they can't stop that, and the county can still do something, they're, they're not, say they can never, never say no, but it's, it's, it's gonna be agreed to, that's what they should achieve here as a part of this agreement, so that's in, in section four and C, then it also, also deals with appropriate commercial uses, so we think our 180 district, so it's Old Fifty going out to Orange County line, obviously, the Ferndale area, the Turnpike, we still have quite a bit of area that can develop between here and Fifty that would impact our town, and we also limit the type of commercial facilities that could be built, as long as they don't have entitlements, so, you know, they can't put junkyards in, and things along that line, that would be detrimental to the town of Montford, so they can put some hospitals in, and some offices, it's limited on what those could be. So, that, that's a win-win for the town, if the county agrees for that, because what happens right outside the city limits affects the town limits, we all know that, so, we want to make sure that we're trying to preserve our, our quality of lifestyle here as well.
All righty. Yeah, make a motion to table.
I so make a motion to table resolution 2025-174. Until appropriate time to be reworked.
A second. Home, favor say aye.
Aye.
Against say nay.
Everybody's good with all the provisions in here to finalize this?
Okay, if you would please, ordinance 2024-41.
An ordinance of the town of Montford, Florida, amending the town of Montford's comprehensive plan to include changing in all elements of the town's comprehensive plan, the planning timeframes from five years to ten years and twenty years, as required by Senate Bill 1604, Chapter 2023-31 laws of Florida, relocating archaeological protection language in the future land use element to the archaeological and historic resources element, increasing the minimum open space percentages required for each future land use designation in the future land use element, requiring access management to be consistent with the Montford Walks Plan, removing a requirement to identify wetlands as conservation open space, clarifying architectural design guidelines as permitted by state statutes, will be added to the land development regulations to assist in compatibility between adjacent uses, excluding jurisdictional wetlands from gross land area, including the types of dwelling units that may be constructed in areas designated as affordable housing on the future land use maps, including commercial District Two, C2, as a space, as a type of commercial future land use designation, clarifying open space definitions, adding public facilities as a future land use designation, include reference to a joint planning agreement, amend Table Two in the future land use element relating to density and intensity of land use designations, amending the capital improvement element, and public facilities element as required by House Bill 1379, Chapter 2023-169, relating to water quality and upper Aklewaha B-mat, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in the town of Montford comprehensive plan, and providing for approval and an effective date.
That was a long one. All righty, who's gonna explain this one?
Okay, well, this is one of my favorite ordinances of the night, and I know, I know the night is going long, but I actually think, as long as this is, I'm hoping you, when we go through this quick presentation, it'll refresh a little bit, if you are kind of tired in the night, as to where we are with this, although it's long, that's just explicative of what we've done over the last nine months. So, you remember, nine months ago, we started the process, because statutorily, we had to change, we had to make those timeframes, it's from the governor, legislation followed, and said, change the planning timeframes, this is a good step for the comp plan, it gets you to thinking about extending and planning for the future, so we went through that process, you remember, we were here, and I gave you all homework, I said, go back and read it, we're gonna change the comprehensive plan, we're gonna pull out old references to like FDER, Department of Environmental Regulation, that doesn't exist anymore, it's now FDEP, we went through, we made a lot of those changes, we made all those changes, pulled out the old stuff that's not applicable anymore, made the statutory, statutory changes that we had to make, there was a couple meetings, if you remember that we had that, I gave you homework, I know this is, this is great reading, you read three hundred and something pages, and you're absolutely right, it was said earlier, you, you know, there's a lot of reading and research to ask to go into this, the comp plan is very important. What we're hoping to do tonight is, I, I, I think you're ready to do it, is to, to be able to do a final adoption, you've already had the transmittal, you transmitted it about six months ago, they gave, they came back, they wanted some additional comments, the state, it was kind of, honestly, it was a little bit surprising, because they usually have, or do not really provide us much comments for when we're doing these kind of routine comprehensive plan changes, but they wanted us to update the data inventory analysis part, no policies, so we updated the data inventory analysis, kind of what's extended things a little bit, you'll see in this, this paper copy of the comp plan, that things that have been changed, I was stricken through, or underlined as the, as the new inserts, this is nothing new than what was done at the transmittal, so I want to be very clear, nothing is being changed, no density changes, none of that, so it's no, no substantial change to your comprehensive plan when it comes to, I want to redo the whole future land use element, something like that, we're trying to get it up to the current standard, and that's what we're hoping to do tonight, this is sort of, it outlines what the statutory changes were required, so we did all that, we're here to just get it in, we need to get it in, and go through the adoption, if you do have significant changes you want to make, that's great, I'll do, we love doing, changing comp plans, we think the comprehensive plan's a very important document for you, we can start that process, you could do this at your visioning, whatever you do, you could, you could launch the process of redoing your entire comprehensive plan if you wanted to, but what we're hoping to tonight is to go ahead and adopt it, get it, get it to the state, although they're not punitive, and like, why is this taking so long, you know, we don't also want them asking questions, you know, later on, hey, why are you still looking at these, basically, what would be ministerial administrative kind of changes to your comprehensive plan? So, that's what we're hoping to do, we'll certainly have any questions, I'm able to, we're able to answer any questions, I hope, and that's what we're asking for, is just to move through with adoption, if we do find anything that's minor, of course, you know, we can, we can, any kind of typo or whatever, we can always, obviously, change that, it's a very big document, that could happen, but this is mostly, I know from the, from the policy side, none of that's changed since what you have already discussed, however long ago, six, six to nine months. So, we're asking for moving forward and getting it adopted, and if you want to start changing the comp plan substantially, or whatever, even if it's just a certain part of it, I know there's questions about the, the economic prosperity element, you know, whatever it is, the archaeological, I meant to, to explain that, that, that language was put into the future land use, none of that's been changed, we just moved it all to the archaeological element as well, which you're one of the few towns and cities that really have that element, by the way, which is kudos to you, it's a further protection. That's what enabled you, if you remember, to even ask questions about archaeological resources on Ausgood. If you didn't have that in the comp plan, you're really not gonna have the backing to kind of ask those questions, so, enough said, and so I'm here to, I think for now, at least, I'm here to answer any questions.
Do you have some?
Yeah, one of the things was, I mean, I, I have a couple, I guess, issues with, with it, but we're not, it doesn't sound like we really can discuss that part now, but I had an issue with the wetlands and conservation section, number one, number two, incorporating C2 and public facilities into the comp plan, but...
Yeah, so the wetlands, that's actually, although it may appear, and people in the audience, I was looking for observations on that, what their reaction is, that's actually to make it more restrictive, because you, so you can't use wetlands for your open space, it's, it's to, you, you, you sort of net out the wetlands to begin with, and then you've got to do your other open space, your other conservation open space, so it actually clarifies it, makes it even more restrictive, that's what we're doing there with that.
Just trying to read my notes here on it all, because there was, this was...
Because what happens typically, sometimes is people try to use their, their open space, they'll use, oh, I got all wetlands, and that's my only open space, so we're, we're clarifying that, trying to make that clear.
Did it, but it read in there, if I, if I remember correctly, it says, if new, I made my notes, if new information proves an area was improperly mapped, the adjacent land use designation may apply instead, something, you know, that, I don't, I don't have the page on this one, I'm sorry.
Inproperly mapped, probably meaning if there's some kind of a national wetlands inventory map, perhaps, I mean, that data can change, that wouldn't change the land use, though, I mean...
Okay.
Yeah.
You'll find a lot of places, in fact, it's, it's come up on recent CUP, that what the wetland maps show, then what they go out and map may be different, and so...
Correct.
They have to turn those in and change those, so basically, it just states that, those areas, if they're properly mapped, you know, they can be adjusted to reflect what the new information is.
Okay.
Did I correct something?
Yeah, it's correct.
I've only left the C2 and the public facilities for me, but...
The C2, to be clear, is you, you don't have any C2 designated, but we, on a zoning map?
Correct.
Or a land use, but it is a category that is available, and I believe that was, Anita, that was, that goes back to the statutory requirement for certain uses with, that you have to allow, or, but you don't have to designate it on a map, though. Yeah, all right. Thank you.
Alan, Carol?
Wish I had more time to go through it all again, it was a heavy read for the weekend.
Well, Mike, one of my questions is, why would we want to go add a C2 if we have C1, and we're pretty much restricted what C1 is in town anyway?
Yeah, I can answer that. All right, so C2 was added, let's say, ten years ago, there was a threat of, of requiring adult entertainment, so we, we did not want to get sued, because attorneys have a lot of money in that world, and what we had to do, if Anita, jump in, but this was, I remember this being a pretty detailed process, we had to set it up, so that that would be an allowable use within C2, but we didn't have to actually put it on a map, so that's why that's there, does not necessarily mean that you, it other, allows other uses, by the way, it's a whole bunch of other stuff, but doesn't mean you actually have to designate it, though.
I remember that, and I mean, the whole county, started with the county commissioners, and every city therefore followed with ordinances that restricted or eliminated adult entertainment anywhere in the town perimeters, so...
That's right, that's right, yeah, you, you can restrict it, definitely regulate it, for sure, like the county, Lake County has quite a extensive licensing, and there's really only one or two places in the entire county that it's designated, but none of it else, it, it won't be, there won't be more added unless some commission comes along, but we, we, and changes that, but what we did at that time was, you know, to make sure that we protect, we're wanting to protect you, that it's a, it's a allowable use in C2, but you don't have C2 on the map anywhere.
And Sean, I just, I was listening, just as some of the council, just were concerned that have time to go through the whole thing, just to be clear, has anything changed, they, I think, adopted, or did the first reading about six months ago, has anything substantially changed in this from, because we did a workshop, then you did a first hearing?
That's right, no, no, nothing, nothing.
So, nothing substantially changed from those first two times you reviewed it, six months ago, or so?
It, it looks intimidating, because you, here you are, you get a big copy of it, and a paper copy of it, but, you know, it's, it's, it, there hasn't, there hasn't been those, like I said, that, the policy, none of that has changed at all, so I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to do that, and, you know, try to change something, I mean, you would catch that, but, and they, with the state would catch it.
And, and this is a living document, so council can always come back and make changes to this, resubmit them to, I mean, this isn't, it's in stone until you change it, so this is always open to the council to look at, and it should be looked at often, because it's the guiding document of what's allowed in the town.
Yeah, yeah, and to that point again, I mean, you could, in two months, you could, you could come back and say, we're, I want to change the whole comp plan, Lake County is changing its entire comp plan. Yeah. I, I just threw that out there, more than, two, whenever, it's up to you, but, but we're, we're, yeah, two months, that'd probably be the worst time, but... It's up to you, but, but we're, uh, yeah, two months, that'd probably be the worst time, but, um, you're gonna be busy. Uh, but, but the point is, is yes, as Paula said, you can change it and you should look at it again and change things.
Carol, anything? Any more, Alan?
Some of the stuff, I wasn't, I went back, I didn't recall on the architectural, uh, situation where we're doing the, um, um, historical documentation of houses in town uh, for the National Registry and I, I got thinking, I only know of one house in town that's, and it's already on the National Registry.
That's right.
Is there, I mean, did we?
No, that's.
Is there something growing under the trees?
All that does is, yeah, it, it, I'm sorry, um, all, all it does is, it says that if you want to register more, that you, you'll, you can. It makes it very clear that, hey, the town is encouraging, if people want to register their homes as national historical landmarks, they can. You don't have to, of course.
Okay.
Yeah.
The other thing that, um, on the historical, architectural, I had some questions about that. It was talking a thousand feet from, uh, Lake of Hopka shores. And what you could do and couldn't do, and you kinda came away with the approach that if you put a, if you're putting a fence in your backyard and you hit a post hole, you hit something, you had to stop and say, hey, I found something here, a piece of pottery. And it made it sound, the way it was written to me is like, okay, stop, call somebody. Then you had to have the architectural, or not architectural, the archaeological people come in and start, you know, tearing up your backyard and they found a, you know, an Indian mound or something buried three feet under your property and it just kinda went like it opened the floodgates. That all of a sudden you have to stop what you're doing until such time that they finished saying, yep, there was something here and yet, you know, in the meantime, I can't continue on with my life. And then I thought, well, who pays for this? Does the town pay for it? Does the resident pay for it? Because this could be an expensive process and I didn't see those spelled out.
We did, all right, so we did not change that element at all, we didn't change any of that language. If you want to change, uh, substantially your arche, your archaeological and cultural and historical resources element, you certainly can do that, you could do that. That could be the thing you do the next time around. Um, what, we're, I'm gonna double check here, but I'm pretty sure how it works is, that's for new development, so like with Osgood, you, they had to submit, you know, the documentation of archaeological resources. Obviously if somebody's digging a fence pole in their backyard and they hit something, if you hit a human bone, the law, state law says that you're supposed to report it. So that'd be above the town, you know, hopefully nobody, I don't know, I mean, with some of the past stories of Mont Verde, maybe, but, um.
Well, we got some stories where Billy Bob disappeared, nobody knew where he went and Ali found him.
Exactly, yeah, maybe, 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 but, um, I, I, you, certainly we can check. I don't think it, it's gonna, it, it puts any burden on, you know, the residential, somebody that's living down here and they find something, you know.
Okay.
And if you want, if you have concerns with that, uh, I would love to work with you on it and we can, we can get a change.
There's a certain resident, which I won't mention his name, on First Street that has, has told me before that, hey, all of a sudden I went, phooop, and it's like, whoa, there's something there, stopped and moved on. And it's just like, you know, some secrets are the best kept secrets, so, you know.
That's true, yeah.
And remember, in a small town, there's lots of things you kinda scratch your head while it's in there, but you know, when the comp plan, you know, the state says it needs to have this element, that element, that element, so you have to at least address it one way or the other, even though it's probably not applicable to the town.
Well, that was, I, that was the B side of that question, is like, I figured a lot of that has to be the state regulators telling us that we have to do something to dot our I and cross our T kind of approach, so.
Yeah, yeah, and it's a, you know, I, I mean, I'm just double checking here, but a lot of it's like encouraging public, uh, education of cultural and architectural resources of the town. I mean, Mont Verde has, has got a lot of history, as you know, we're a hundred years old. There's a lot of history there, so a lot of that has talks about promoting that, um, yeah.
This was in, uh, chapter eleven, policy one point one three, point two, protecting potential sites. And it talks about that, um, so.
Yeah, the developer, yeah, that's where the developer shall notify, right?
Right.
Exactly.
Okay.
So we wouldn't view, um, you know, obviously we wouldn't view a citizen. I mean, obviously we, we hope that they report a body, but if they, something else, that's, they're not a developer, but.
All righty, I guess, um, council good?
How often do we normally review these? I know, obviously it says ten years, but how often do we normally, as council?
You have the year, but you're supposed to do actually seven years. The planning timeframes to ten, or twenty now. But, uh, so, so I think you have an year coming up in about two years. That would be, which you'd have to do. So regardless, if it's two months or two years, you're gonna have to do it anyway, yeah.
Well, you can do it anytime in between.
You could, yeah, you could do it.
Okay.
And then this time the state legislator said you will, because they want that new element in it. So that, that's really the kicker, is the state legislators want you to start putting new elements in.
Yeah, and you know, and again, it's just, it's, you want to, you know, the, the, you worry, you don't worry as much about the punitive side, they're a little different agency than they were fifteen or twenty years ago, but you don't, you definitely don't want to have big tag with bias, Mont Verde been sitting on this, you know, for two years to get the statutory changes made, so. That's why we're here, basically.
Any more? Any more, Alan?
Well, my mind races back to a discussion we had several years ago, probably ten years ago on this, that, uh, Bert Roper spent a lot of his own personal money over here in Mont Verde and, uh, put that book together that, you know, went through the history of, uh, way, 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 way back then, to, over two hundred years ago and documented a lot of sites that are still, haven't been really dug up per se. And I just didn't want a can of worms to kinda go from there.
Yeah, and I, I mean, all I can say is, you know, I, like, if, I know from the development process, somebody's gonna consult with the Division of Historical Resources anyway. So they're gonna do it, they're gonna want to get the clearance. Now, they could come back and say, well, you didn't know there's an Indian burial mound there or there's a, some historic structure or something, but they'll tell you. And that's what the comp plan is basically saying is, you gotta consult with them for development first, the developers. And then, uh, get the clearance, I mean, if they get clearance, then it's not an issue for them.
Well, one other thing that I, this is my final, so we all get to go home. We've talked about, uh, at least I have, some others about, uh, the, uh, Osgood property and the, and the natural history and so forth, the fauna and so forth. There we talked about gopher turtles and, uh, it was brought to my attention, several of the residents said, well, what about the nesting eagles there? And, um, I talked to Florida Department Agriculture, Consumer Service people about that and they said, oh, yeah, let me tell you, we've shut things down where there's six hundred and eighty-three feet from a known nesting site, no developer can disturb that site from September through, I think it is July. And, um, it can take a federal judge, it'll shut down any kind of a thing. I would kind of almost like to have seen that somehow worked in here, so that, just FYI, we all forget about it, I didn't realize that, but I was told that there's been some serious developments, big projects that have been literally shut down and, um, that's on the developer, you know?
Yeah.
I'm sorry that the eagles chose to land there, but you're not gonna do anything with, within two football fields. You're not gonna build a road, you're not gonna do any interstructure, cease and desist, so.
Yeah, we can, we can certainly, um, that, you know, a good place for that might be to go through and add uh, into the conservation element next time you, I would say next time you do it. But I will tell you that they, uh, I do know, I've done bald eagle monitoring, it's very relaxed, relaxing and peaceful. You do, you monitor them in the morning and the afternoon or the evenings. But their, if fish and wildlife, um, is, is, um, requiring them to do it, they will. They're like gopher tortoise, they follow up with gopher tortoises, believe it or not, they, they're very tough. They will, they will shut a development down if they're doing work within that, uh, six hundred and ninety foot zone. It actually might even be up to eighty, hundred and eighty feet now, um, during the nesting season. So they will do it, they will shut it down, but we can certainly add, we can strengthen that during the conservation element if you want to.
Okay.
Another thing, anything, anything else to, I mean, you could do endangered plants if you wanted to.
I'm good, that's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
All righty, thank you. Uh, I'll open it up to the public. Who else wants to talk about it?
Matthew Baumann, eleven twenty-two, Imperial Eagle Street, Groveland, Florida. I just wanted to say I really like the jurisdictional wetlands exclusion. I think that's something I would have liked to have seen in Groveland a long time ago, so, I'm glad you guys are doing it, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, I'll bring it back to council and we need a motion. To, to accept or deny?
Do you need a motion? That's it, if, if nobody wants to say anything, we're.
It would be to adopt, yeah.
Uh, I make a motion that we adopt the ordinance twenty twenty-four forty-one.
I have a motion to adopt, I need a second.
My second.
You have a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against say nay. Eyes have it. I make a motion that we adjourn.
Uh, thank you, I only have, I only have three chocolates, so I have to.
Throw them in the air, whoever grabs them gets them.
That's bribery. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against say nay, eyes have it. Here, I got these for you.